The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Warren?
I did that all without a microphone. All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move that the board convene in closed session in room 337 pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Pren. 1, Pren. C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility in pursuit to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Pren. 1, Pren. F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons. Preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except where par, Pren. B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. To wit, staff investigations and administrative assignments in pursuit to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Pren. 1, Pren. E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit Oak Learning Center contract and Model III contract negotiations. The board will reconvene in open session at 6:00 PM pursuant to Section 19.85, Pren. 2, Wisconsin Statute to consider the balance of the agenda, which will include an open forum, system and monitoring reports, and the superintendent's update. The board may reconvene in closed session after the conclusion of the regular board meeting for such reasons noted in this posting and pursuant to a proper motion. The board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session.
Second?
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carrie, 5-0, will convene across the hall. I'd entertain a motion to reconvene in open session.
I move that the board reconvene in open session pursuant to Section 19.85, Pren. 2, Wisconsin Statute to consider the balance of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy? McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye. Carrie, 6-0. Also, before we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to announce that six board members are present today and one is excused. Also, joined at the table, joining us at the table is Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, to my left; to my far left, Sandy Heller, the board secretary; and to my far right, we have Luke Pizzani, who's the president of Inter-City Student Council, and Jenica Mortenson from Southwest High School. And then a reminder that members of the public can view the board agenda and handouts as well as minutes from past meetings by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org, clicking on Our District and then Board of Education. On the left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Agenda Manager, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. At this point, we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then I'd like Katie to read our mission statement, please.
Gladly. We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Katie. Next is our collaborative commitments. These are commitments that the Board of Education developed back in September. Why don't we start with Katie, and we'll go around to Laura, and then around the table, and each read one.
We will strive to review board materials and seek clarifying information before board meetings.
We will embrace diverse views and perspectives as a path to effective solutions.
Rhonda's next, I think.
We will show consideration to everyone, fellow school board members, staff, students, families, and community members in our speech and behavior.
We will consider the merits of ideas as the primary driver of our decisions.
We will offer our comments efficiently and succinctly and avoid repetition in order to keep board meetings to a reasonable length.
We will create equitable and inclusive opportunities to promote community engagement.
We will engage in conversations in a way that allows for all perspectives to be shared, considered, and valued.
All right, next is our open forum. Tonight, the board will provide our community with two different opportunities to speak before the board. The first opportunity is during our open forum. The second opportunity is during agenda items where indicated by public comment on our agenda. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meetings law prohibits the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board also will permit public comment during agenda items as noted on the board's agenda. During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. The process for speaking during our agenda items is as follows. The board will first hear the presentation and discuss the agenda item before calling on those who desire to speak. If you want to speak during a specific agenda item, please fill out a form and give it to the board secretary at any point during the meeting. If you desire to speak and haven't yet filled out a form, just indicate that to the board secretary, and you can fill out a form afterwards. The board secretary will provide the names of those wishing to speak to the board member conducting that part of the meeting, and you will be called upon to speak at the appropriate time. Please keep your comments to five minutes. If your comments are going to be longer than five minutes, please submit written comments. Prior to starting your comments, please provide your name and address. At this time, I have one person who's indicated a desire to speak, and I will call up Sarah Pamper.
Hello, my name is Sarah Pamper, and I live at 2397 Yolanda Circle, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54303. And I just wanted to read to you a list I brainstormed today of a few things that I thought that $9,505.13 could bring us as a district beyond what was released in a report today. So the first one I have is an equity audit, which I've asked for many times since coming back to this district in 2018. I did the math, I found out we could get flexible seating for 13 classrooms in our district with that amount of money. Also doing the math, 114,060 pencils for my students, or 237 packets of school supplies for students that they get at the beginning of the school year; 380 copies of the book Crucial Conversations for District Administrators, School Board Members, and Teacher Libraries within schools; perhaps a teacher appreciation luncheon hosted by school board members; four riders for equity coaches in each quadrant; transportation for secondary students wanting to attend summer school; retention-based initiatives for bilingual and special education teachers; funds to hire an additional external counselor to come into schools to meet one-on-one with students; field trips and experiments for kids from underserved communities; one-on-one computers for all secondary students; offering listening sessions at each individual school where teachers, parents, and students can share concerns within our district; funds for community and parent liaisons to support our work with students of color and from other marginalized backgrounds; racial literacy training for teachers; more financial support for paraprofessionals; and ways to make more our avid program that we have at Edison and other initiatives like this to keep kids in school to go district-wide. That's all.
All right, thank you, Sarah. What? You have a what?
I have a public comment that was sent to me that he would like me to read.
Actually, I, can I just put a hold on that?
Sure.
Because I just realized we have recognition before open forum. So I'd like to do that, and then we'll consider your request.
Sure.
So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Langenfeld. We have some exciting recognitions to give today to our Kohl's Scholarship and Award winners.
Thank you. It is certainly my honor and privilege to introduce you to our students and teachers, winners of the 2020 Herb Kohl Education Foundation Award. It's not an easy award to receive because it is such a competitive opportunity, and only the best of the best get chosen. So tonight, it is my privilege, I'm going to start with Student Excellence Scholars. So I'm going to have our students come forward. I'd like to invite Ben and Colin to join at the table and talk a little bit about what this means. These two young men are Southwest High School seniors, each engaged in different parts of the school. It's a big night for Southwest here, so, and there's Lucas smiling, that's great. Luke's smiling. Anyway, the Students Excellence Scholars. They're chosen for demonstrating excellence in the academic arena and for high motivation and achievement. They are honored for displaying a broad range of activity and leadership outside of the academic setting, showing strong promise for succeeding in college and beyond. Each of the students that sit before us will each receive $10,000 in scholarships. So let's give them a round of applause, and then I'm going to have them speak. So if you would just be so kind as to just share a few words about what you love about Southwest High School and what your plans are moving forward. And the first test will be, can you figure out how to use the microphone in front of you?
Yeah, no, I really just appreciate the Green Bay schools for supporting both of us through all of our years in being part of the Green Bay School District and really allowing us the flexibility to take more advanced courses, and really, it's allowed us to do so much. It's really, we really appreciate that all of our hard work has paid off and that we're being awarded this scholarship.
Yeah, I'd like to add on to that. I just am thankful for the home that Green Bay Area Public Schools have provided me. Being a transfer student from Ashwabanan, this was the place that allowed me to go beyond what I thought I could do in education, and it truly provided the foundation for me to provide to my community and to what I want to do in the future.
So future plans?
Future plans, I am committed to Concordia University of Wisconsin in Mequon, and am planning on doing a double major in political science and social work, and hope for social reform and social justice.
I'm still waiting on college, hopefully acceptance letters, and I'm planning to study chemistry, and I'd like to pursue something in medicine.
Colin McCabe and Joe, sorry, that's his father. The parents are here. And Ben, I don't want to say your name wrong.
For Dean.
Just as it looks, so let's give them a round of applause, and the future looks great. Yeah, we do want a picture, if we could. Gentlemen? Photo ops. Photo ops. With the board, president and the board, so. Ben also had a perfect ACT, just who's counting, right? Way to go, Southwest teachers! And all the teachers that supported him on the journey, so thank you. Thank you for joining us. And now, it is my honor and privilege to introduce you to our teacher fellows, the Herb Kohl Teacher Fellows that are here tonight. But before I do that, I just want to make note that Lauren Bonetti from Preble High School is also a Student of Excellence Scholar, and she couldn't be here this evening. So I would like to now invite Shane McDonough, Work Experience Coordinator from East High School, to join us as a teacher fellow; Brandon Raxter, Southwest High School Teacher Fellow; and is Sarah here? There she is. Sarah Schiller, MacArthur Elementary Teacher Fellow, Herb Kohl Teacher Fellows. It is truly my honor and privilege to extend congratulations to you. The Teacher Fellows are chosen for their ability to inspire a love of learning in their students, the ability to motivate others, and their leadership and service outside the classroom. Each teacher will receive $6,000 along with their school. And I would offer that the teachers that sit before us are extraordinary in what they do each and every day. They are beyond what one would expect. They go beyond, they inspire to a point, they are inclusive, and bring students along the way and shepherd them. And so we are so very grateful to what you do and what you bring to our district, and the extraordinary opportunities that you have afforded our students throughout your tenure here. So looking forward to many years to come, so don't go anywhere, but we sincerely appreciate you, and you are all very, very deserving, so congratulations. And if you wouldn't mind, just kind of give our public a little bit, audience out there in television land and the folks in the room, just a few words about what you do and what you love to do each and every day. You're so inspirational, all three of you, so thank you.
I teach fourth grade at MacArthur, and teaching is such a great career, to inspire so many children and get to see them grow from the beginning to the end of our school year. It's just such a great experience.
And I teach choir at Southwest High School. It's my 10th year in the district, and to be sitting next to a feeder of Southwest High School, Shane is a good friend of mine, I'll talk about him in a second, but the two student leaders from Southwest and two other Kohl winners from Southwest, it's been a rough year for our school publicity-wise. I'm really excited that we're able to bring some positive publicity because it really is a great place to be. And I'm also appreciative of this district's support of the fine arts. As a music teacher myself, we have a wonderful district that invests time, money, resources, support into the fine arts, led by a superintendent who shows up at like every event we have. Saturday night, there was a show choir competition that involved several Green Bay schools, and she's staying up late, watching it online, emailing us and texting us results. It's just, it's fantastic, and it's, we're going to miss it. So thank you so much. Shane is a dear friend of mine who also is in the fine arts as well, so thank you, Green Bay Schools, for supporting the fine arts. That's my message, I guess.
Thank you for the kind words and for allowing us to be here tonight to celebrate with everyone. I teach at Green Bay East High School. My title is Work Experience Coordinator, I'm a special education teacher, and I work with students who are transitioning from school into their adult lives. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank someone who I've worked very close with over the last four years, Leila Blazinski, who's a paraprofessional in our district who's on maternity leave, she's having a baby maybe right now, I don't know. But she really has supported our programming and our kids alongside me and has really put up with some of my shenanigans over the years. Obviously, I also want to thank Lori Ferk, my principal, and Claudia Hendrickson, my director, for putting up with my shenanigans, and thank you for taking a chance on that guy in the blue glasses, both of you are here. And other than that, I'm just, I thank the families that I have the opportunity to work with and the students that I have the opportunity to serve because they teach me much more than I could possibly teach them. So thank you for having us tonight.
So I again would like to invite you up for a photo op, please, if you would join us again. Let's give Shane McDonough from East High School and Brandon Raxter from Southwest High School and Sarah Schilling from MacArthur another round of applause, Herb Kohl Fellows. That was fun. I have more things to share about Southwest, but later tonight, in my success stories. I'll be sharing that.
All right, we'll go back to open forum, and I just want to check in, is it okay with board members if Rhonda reads someone else's public comments? Okay. Go ahead, Rhonda.
I was sent this on the way to the meeting, and I believe he may have sent it to all of us in a similar capacity, but he wanted it read on record in the meeting, in the open forum portion of the meeting. And it is from former board member Ed Dorff, who's also, he is a Green Bay resident, and he needs his address for the record. Do you need that?
Yes.
Okay. 3375 Pebble Beach Court. And he wanted me to share that in relation to the agenda item under modification to the Table of Organization Associated Job Description, which relates to the proposal to hire a district investigator, he says that "I urge you to vote down the proposal to add an investigator to the administration. I believe it's unnecessary and sends several messages that do not serve the district or its leadership well." And he wanted me to read that for the record. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak before the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to, I'll entertain a motion under minutes.
The move to approve the minutes is listed.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Minutes are approved. Next is the superintendent's report or update, and then I'll turn that over to Dr. Langenfeld.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the calendar for March. On March 26, we have the ICSC meeting with our students at 7:30 here in the boardroom. On March 26, we also have a special board meeting with our principals at 5:00 here at the district office building. And then on April 6, Teaching and Learning Organizational Support Work Session Meeting begins at 6:00. April 7 is Election Day. April 15 is the Golden Apple Awards banquet, and interestingly enough, we will be celebrating Mr. Ned Dorff, who is our Golden Apple winner from the Green Bay Area Public Schools this year. We're glad you're here. And then we have our April 27 regular board meeting at 6:00 as well. So that is the calendar coming up in March and April, and then I don't have recess in there, the spring recess, but that's coming up as well. At this time, we have an energy resolution that we'd like to bring forward, and I'm going to invite Pete Ross, who is our Chief Operations Officer, and Mike Stengel, along with a team that has been working tirelessly on the energy resolution as part of our community partners. It'll be Mr. Dorff, and I see Casey, and I see Seth, so come on up and then do formal introductions as well. Thank you. It's a lot of great work that's being done here, folks.
Good evening. Mike and I are going to turn it over to these three gentlemen who really have been spearheading this project for the Green Bay School District and exactly for the state of Wisconsin in its entirety as well. But it's been our privilege, Mike and I, to be working with these individuals who have been able to work with board members and bring a resolution forward that we think has great merit. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to the gentlemen and let them introduce themselves and the resolution, and then answer any questions that the board might have.
I'll introduce myself first. I'm Casey, I'm the Northeast Organizer with Wisconsin Conservation Voters.
Seth Hoffmeister, Organizing Political Director for Wisconsin Conservation Voters, also the Chair of the City of Green Bay Sustainability Commission.
In stereo. I'm Ned Dorff, and I teach first and second grade at Aldo Leopold Community School. I wanted to say thank you to the folks that are up here, as well as a few board members who have sat down several meetings with us. Brenda and Christina and Laura have attended some meetings with us to discuss this resolution. And I just want to kind of give a quick overview. Over the last two years, I've been working a little bit with people in the district on the idea of pursuing clean energy as an alternative for our district. And I think it started back on the snow day in April of 2018 where we had a foot and a half of snow, whatever that was, but I emailed probably several of you sitting here tonight and wanted to get some feedback on whether we, as a school district, would be interested in moving forward. And over that time, we also worked with Kim Shanock and tried to chase some grant money toward some solar panel projects for the district. This resolution that we have in front of us, I believe, is a very comprehensive resolution. It recognizes the fact that the district has put in a lot of work and effort, through Mike Stengel's department especially, over the last 10 years in regards to energy efficiency and upgrading systems and facilities, and we've made a lot of progress. I also think this resolution sets a reasonable goal. It sets a timeline to become 100% clean energy dependent by the year 2050. You know, we had conversations about whether we should be more aggressive with that goal. I think over time, I think individually we can be, but I also think 2050 is probably a reasonable goal to set at this point. The resolution gives purpose to the goal. It creates a mandate to consider clean energy and environmental, or energy efficiency in new construction for the district, which is a new thing. It sets benchmarks over the course of the next 20 years or 30 years, and it sets, it lists some mechanisms for funding the goal, which I think is obviously crucial. The other thing that I like about the proposal as it sits is it requires active engagement from several members of Green Bay Area Public Schools. It sets up some staff assignment and sets up basically a committee or commission to pursue these goals and make sure that it's not just a resolution that gets passed and forgotten. forgotten about. So, yeah, without, you know, any more fanfare from me, we'd be glad to take questions or pass it over here.
Yeah, I'm going to add just a little bit. And I think the process of this has been really great to work with Mike and Ned and Pete and some of you sitting on the board on all of this. When we originally came to talk to all of you in January, you asked us to put teeth in any type of resolution that we'd be drafting with you. And I think that this resolution has teeth and then some. In comparison to the other two resolutions that we brought as examples to you back in January, this is probably the most comprehensive resolution, 100% clean energy resolution, that's zero carbon emissions resolution for a school, district, and the entire state. And the reason being why, there's a few notable things I just want to point out. I think first of all, talking about in the resolution within the whereas statements, recognizing the connection of climate and the environment to staff and students in the community's health is really important. And that's something that was mentioned briefly in other resolutions, but was very deliberate in this one. So far, is going to talking about actually working on your wellness policy to include climate into that. That's something that other resolutions had not included. The thing that stands out the most to me, and it was Pete's idea, was the Fund 46 and setting up an established long-term capital projects fund. That's not mentioned in any other resolution in the state. And that's something that's actionable and that's going to carry through to your 2050 goal. And then, of course, the other two things that really stood out to me were that were in the other resolutions as well, but I think needed to be in here, were setting up the committee and the commission that's made up of community members, experts, staff people from the district to work on a work plan going into the future, along with designating a staff position and some hours to be working on this and make sure that the goals are being followed through on. So, I just want to, I'll pass it off to Seth if he has anything, or if Mike or Pete have anything. But otherwise, I wanted to say thank you for inviting us to the table to help you write it, and that we're very willing partners going into the future too, if you need anything else from us, so.
Yeah, I really don't have a lot to add. Again, thank you for, you know, the opportunity to work with you all on some of these goals and for, yeah, this incredible process in putting together this resolution. Look, we're living in the age of climate change, and we need to do something about it. The sufficient amount of action required to address the threat isn't happening. But what is happening is the local governments all across the state and all across the country are stepping up and taking it upon themselves. So, like Casey said, if this resolution passes, it's going to be the strongest commitment by a school district in Wisconsin, which is incredibly exciting. I think we get into the doom and gloom when we talk about climate change, and I'm definitely guilty of that, and I often feel like the bearer of bad news. But to see such a positive reaction to an incredible threat, you know, just really feels good. Not only is it the right thing scientifically to do, but this is something that's going to save the district millions of dollars in the next 30 years. And it's going to set an example for other school districts across the state that aren't Madison's, but, you know, just want to approach a problem realistically in a fiscally responsible way. So, looking forward to answering any questions that you might have about this. And again, thank you.
And the timeline of this is, this is our chance to have a discussion about the resolution. It will come again to us at the work session in February, sorry, going backwards, in April. And then it will take a vote on it at our board meeting at the end of April. So, if you have feedback or anything that you'd like to see changed tonight and/or you also can bring that feedback back to our work session in April. Rhonda.
Thanks for all the work on this. Definitely has teeth. It's a whole mouthful of teeth, so thank you. I'd like to know what you believe it would look like if we were, you know, because 2050 is a, I'll be 80, by the way, by then. What do you think it would look like? Like, do you have ideas of time built in where, you know, we should be cooking with gas a little bit more here versus here? Or do you have, what would it look like? And would you be just kind of watching us from afar or checking in with us to make sure that we were on some sort of trajectory, I can say, trajectory? What do you anticipate happening?
We have some benchmarks on here. It's the backside of the page, maybe it's the top of the second page. So, the benchmarks say that the Green Bay Area Public School District would establish goals to meet 50% of all district operations' energy needs with carbon-neutral energy by 2035, 75% by 2040, and 100% by 2050, as measured by our carbon footprint. Realistically, we talked about what kind of technology exists right now and what doesn't exist right now. And right now, we have the technology to offset our electrical use through generation of solar electricity. That's kind of the easiest route to go. What we don't have right now, technologically speaking, is a way to counter, like, our natural gas use and our vehicle fuel use on a grand scale. There's just not that readily accessible way to do it. So, that being said, we could meet all of our electrical need very shortly, all the We kind of are waiting to see, and chime in, please, but we, I think, we're kind of waiting to see how it would look to offset the fuel, the gasoline and natural gas and things like that.
Go ahead.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, basically, I just wanted to know, I guess maybe I'll just clarify. I know there's going to be a committee that will be formed, and are you involved? Are you overseeing? Are you partnering? Just to kind of keep us on our toes, making sure that we're staying true to the mission.
I mean, speaking from the perspective of Wisconsin Conservation Voters, we are, you know, we'd like to see 100 communities make these goals over the course of the next five years. And we're not going to be asking communities to do that unless we can say, all right, what's the next step there? So, we're really excited to introduce a clean energy toolkit tomorrow. Casey here can tell you a little bit more about that, but that's just the first step in making sure that local governments, school districts have the resources to actually implement these goals. And what's really exciting about more and more local government entities taking these steps is we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I would love to see in the next few years, as we have more and more progress on this issue, more sharing of ideas, sharing of successes. You know, like the state's Climate Change Task Force is meeting tomorrow, and they're going to be continuing to have meetings. I would love to tell them that they should be providing a space for governments to collaborate across the state. So, I can't exactly tell you what it's going to look like in terms of how to do it, but as we figure out how to make this first step, we want to be with you there for step two, step three, step four. And taking that hat off and putting the Sustainability Commission hat on with the City of Green Bay, I think that, you know, it's been really exciting to take some of the first steps into the clean energy journey at the city level, but having a partner at the district level is going to make it easier, and we can collaborate and share best practices and keep pushing each other. So, I think there's a lot of opportunities there as well.
Can I add to that? Sorry. I just wanted to answer a little bit more about how will we continue to be involved? So, Seth is the chair, and I'm the vice chair of the Sustainability Commission, and we've set up a working group for clean energy that we meet monthly. And we would be more than willing to, you know, incorporate school district work into what we do on those monthly meetings. And the district, it says in the resolution that the district would designate, well, assemble, I should say, volunteer work group. So, yes, I think any one of us would be willing to be part of that volunteer work group.
And I think another thing that we talked about at our meetings was that you will be potentially a resource for us in terms of having your ear to the ground for grants and grant opportunities and things like that, that we might hear about later than you would.
I'll add quickly too, because Seth mentioned the Clean Energy Toolkit. That's a resourcing guide that we not only want to just hand off to you, but guide you through that process as well and actually walk you through it. Like you said, we're going to be there with you from step one to step two, step three, and step four. Rhonda, I think to like get a little bit more at some of what you're asking, I think there are going to be some more opportunities going forward, potentially from the state as well, as the Public Service Commission gets new appointees and kind of changes over a little bit. There will probably be more opportunities for funding grants. The Office of Energy Innovation in the state also has a very comprehensive funding list and list of financial resources that are available out there as well. And again, those are all things that we're happy to help you as a school board navigate, so.
No other questions? And thank you again for all your work on this, and I'm really excited. I think we, with your help, produced a really great resolution to move forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, you weren't, sorry. Dr. Langenfield wants to say something.
Well, as we move forward, the other piece that Pete's going to speak about is a possibility of how we will continue to fund this in the future through Fund 46 resolution. But I have to share with you that if you've not been able to attend a meeting, I leave those meetings so energized by the fact that the future looks so bright. Not only do we have great thinking moving forward, but the recognition that my grandchildren will have a place in space and their children will have a place in space in the future, just like people prepared for us. So, even with the world kind of shifting and things to attend to these important things, Mike's done a great job, and Pete's all in. He knows a lot more about it than I ever thought he did, but he's got a lot of experience as well. But I have to share with you, it leaves me just really, just excited about the future and where the environment will be. And I'm not sure I'll be around in 2050, because I'll probably be about 100. But if I am, and I could be, I just want to thank you for that. This forward thinking is so critically important, and the future looks awesome, so thank you.
These two resolutions actually go hand in hand, and so I'm glad the guys are going to stay up here when I introduce Fund 46, which incidentally is a resolution that I believe your business manager about five years ago was toying with implementing at that time and never brought it forward for board consideration, and I think that that was a misstep. But nevertheless, we're going to correct that with these two resolutions. The two people that are sitting at the table that are probably most excited about you guys going forward with these resolutions are our two student representatives who won't be 50 yet in 2050. So, they're probably pretty excited that you're taking the lead in this community to go forward and working toward these clean energy plans. Fund 46 is nothing other than a tool that we can use to fund these long-range plans. And like my dad said, the best time to plant a tree is 10 years ago. You know, we would have wished that the school board had considered this resolution five years ago, when it was being talked about within the ranks of the administration. Nevertheless, when you do support a Fund 46 resolution and you authorize its existence, and I too am struggling with some of those words, when you authorize its existence, it has to be in place for five years before you can draw any money out of it. Now, having said that, you would say, well, that's going to be a bad thing for this energy, for these energy projects moving forward. Not necessarily, because we're in it for the long haul. The purpose for me being here, and I feel very strongly about this, isn't to set the district up for the next year or the year after, or the year after that. It's to set the district up for when I'm not here any longer, so that the successor to people in the positions that Mike and I have are able to work with school boards in the future as well, to continue this process that you've started today. Actually, the work that this committee did with these guys started a couple months ago and will be culminating in April. It's to say that you support that work going forward, that you are going to commit to a long-range plan, and that is the teeth necessary to commit funds and to commit the moment or the movement of this district toward these projects. So, before you will be voting on a resolution in April for both of these resolutions, Mike and I have to put together a very brief but comprehensive long-range plan that will include energy conservation projects, and that'll be part and parcel of the Fund 46. But in, the long and the short of it is, it's got to be in existence for five years before we can spend any of the funds. The advantage of a Fund 46, because this district is heavily aided, is that every dollar that you put into the fund, the state of Wisconsin kicks back and equalization aids 65 cents. So, it's an extremely wise investment. The return on investment is phenomenal, and you'll be able to start funding long-range projects that can be used for energy and clean energy projects for the future.
What do you anticipate over the first five years, funds that we would be able to put in there?
At least a dollar. You got to get it funded, so at least there has to be a dollar that would go in this year. You know, that's going to be entirely up to the school board. It is a irrevocable trust. Once you've committed funds to that trust, they cannot be taken back. So, the board would have to consider a Fund 10 transfer into Fund 46, and all of those funds will be determined individually at the time of transfer by the Board of Education. So, you have complete control over what you decide to put into it.
Okay. And you'll advise us, I mean, you'll have advice on what you think would be a wise amount to put in there?
From year to year, absolutely.
Right, okay. Okay. Laura?
Pete, can you tell me, could a citizen make a donation to that fund? Say, there was a citizen in our community who felt very strongly about this. Is that allowed under the law?
In order to get aid, it would have to be a Fund 10 transfer. Now, you can tell the citizen that if you want to do an energy project or donate to an energy project, we're going to have ongoing projects between now and five years that that money could then be used for, not necessarily going into Fund 46, but used for those projects. For example, your energy resolution that hopefully you'll be adopting and supporting in April is committing the board and the school district to have its first solar array up and operating at the end of next school year. So, if somebody wants to donate money to a Fund 20 account, we'd be happy to take that money and then earmark it towards those projects.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, and we'll see you in April. It is exciting, and thank you to the board members who are serving on that group as well. At this time, I want to invite Nancy Shartier and John Magus to the table to talk about literacy intervention, and more specifically about a conversation we've been having around dyslexia and dyslexia-like opportunities that children present at a very young age. As we know, the state of Wisconsin does not identify dyslexia, but it has been an ongoing conversation that I've been engaging in with the other five, the other four largest school districts in the state, as well as the state superintendent and associate superintendent of the state of Wisconsin. There have been numerous pieces of legislation out there focused on dyslexia, and we've had multiple, multiple conversations. And Nancy Shartier has done some research on our behalf and wants to talk about the work that we've been doing here in Green Bay that I am very confident will be well-accepted and something that the state will want to be in helping us with and supporting us in this. that I am very confident will be well-accepted and something that the state will want to be in helping us with and supporting us in this endeavor as we work to address our youngest learners and any issues and related concerns around dyslexia. So, thank you, Nancy. I don't know if I teed that up exactly how you planned, but that's what I wanted to say. So, thank you and welcome.
And I just want to say thank you to Dr. Chartier, as well as the team of people with whom she works. They're, they've been dedicated to really putting, putting the deepest effort possible into researching the best possible ways of making sure that every student is literate here in the Green Bay area public schools. There has been no stone unturned, and I think that, that the creativity and dedication that she and her team have, have used in working with others, including Dr. Warren, our, our board president, in exploring literacy, have really led to some out-of-the-box thinking that will allow us to be more cutting-edge than, than many other districts in the state of Wisconsin, more than any, any in the state of Wisconsin truly. And I, I truly got goosebumps when Dr. Chartier was sharing her plan with me. I remember exactly where I was. I was driving, and we frequently have evening conversations on the way to or from work. And really, the, the plan that she has, it adds a significant other layer of support for students who, who need support with dyslexia or dyslexia-like symptoms. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Dr. Chartier.
Thank you very much, John. Just a little bit of a refresher for our audience, that this is just the ongoing work that we've actually started five years ago to make progress towards meeting the needs of all our students in the Green Bay area public school district. As you're well aware, as we presented last time, that we implemented the Language Essentials for Teaching of Reading and Spelling Letters with our interven, our pre-K students, as well as moving forward next year in our K1 students with that same training for our educators. We also to date have 29 interventions that we have, our staff can select as part of the multi-level systems of support systems and processes that are in place. And we currently have one literacy coach who's being trained in the Orton Gilliam Literacy Intervention and is currently administering that type of intervention across the district. That being said, it's all work moving in the right direction. We know that of our 29 interventions that we have, they're 30 minutes, five days a week, provided by a licensed interventionist. This proposal that I've brought forward is a step beyond, it is a literacy intervention position, but actually a literacy therapy program. So this, these particular professionals would be trained in, in a take-flight intervention, and that is a well-researched intervention for dyslexia students. It's a very intensive training, 100 hours the first year of service that they put in with the students, and the second year would be a second course. And then, of course, ongoing professional learning, all of, some of about 700 hours in their training. This is rarely found, this level of, of services rarely found in a public school in the state of Wisconsin, which lends us wanting to be one of the leaders in this, to provide truly an intervention that addresses the academic language. I'm sorry, there would be actually academic language specialists that would provide instruction in specific methodology. And also a more intensive intervention, the intervention would be 50 minutes in time over a five-day period. And also, it would be a commitment of two years for the students that would, shall I say, qualify for this intervention. Not only that, as we've learned with all of our folks and professionals that we work with, it's a great opportunity to learn from each other. So this is only the beginning of bringing in a different way of looking at how students learn at a very deep level. So with that being said, we would obviously have our specialist working very closely with the other interventionists, the classroom teacher, the building principal, Lynda Teske, myself, literacy coaches within the school, so that we can learn from each other to build the program forward. At this time, this is where we're at in our development. The students that would be selected would be screened. They have multiple screeners that they have recommended. We've also done some research on particular screeners that would best fit the type of student we're looking for, for these services. So with that being said, in April, I would hope I'd be invited back with a proposal for three of these positions. So academic therapists that address the learning needs of students whom we, at this time, have not quite unlocked the code of how to teach.
So really, our, so really, our intention is to bring forward this as a general proposal for your foreshadowing so that we, when we come forward in April with the position description, as well as the governance request for those positions, there would be an understanding of where the, where, where that fits and how that is a huge support for our students with significant learning needs.
Any questions? Andrew?
Yes, I want to thank you for your work on this. This is a, this is a big deal, and I guess I didn't realize. It's, it's actually groundbreaking that, not that we're adding another intervention or adding more interventionists for struggling readers, that's, that's important. But what's really groundbreaking here is we're saying, we're saying dyslexia is real, and we're saying that dyslexia is a situation where someone isn't just more years behind in reading than someone else. It's its own condition that, that needs its own interventions. And I, although I knew that we were somewhat ahead of where other school districts have been all along, I never realized how tragically behind the entire country is on this, and look forward to being a, a leader on this going forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
Go ahead.
On Friday, we'll be meeting with the, the four other large school districts, Madison, Milwaukee, Racine, and Kenosha. And Nancy will be presenting this to them for consideration. I think one of the opportunities that we have as we make this presentation is to not only share what we're doing, but, but also to see if there are some additional resources that we can leverage through the Department of Public Instruction and possibly the state. I know this is an effort that, this particular type of position was identified in a piece of legislation out there that said, this is what you need. And it's, it's still, it hasn't moved forward like some other, like the guidebook has. But this is one of those opportunities where I would expect that the conversations will be very rich, as all the districts present. And then also to look to some resource possibly, because I would think that the state would want to have some support of this as well. So, looking forward to that, and I thank you, Dr. Chartier. Looking forward to that. John will be going as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. I was actually going to ask, and you answered my question, but I just wanted to say, of this document, what I love is on page one where you talk about multisensory teaching, discovery, mastery techniques to support students, and related language-based learning differences. I just think that really just defines the scope of the learner, and I'm, I'm really excited about this. Thank you for your work, and I look forward to learning more. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Rhonda has.
Is it possible that we still have record of the speakers that were here? Was it summer?
Yeah, we would.
Would we be able to reach out to them and talk about, or let them know and make them aware of what, what we're doing with this?
The dyslexia speakers, we should be able to, yeah.
You know, just to give them an idea of where.
To know we're moving.
Thank you.
That's a wonderful idea. Appreciate it, and I think it'll be really good outreach. And also, just, just so that the board is aware, we, we've been working on this for, for multiple years, and this is something that, that even, of course, when we hear from the public as well, we, creates a greater sense of urgency, but it was something that, that we are, have always been planning to tend to, and we're under the development of that, that proposal, even at that point when, when people came forward. It was just something that we wanted to make sure was fully fleshed out before sharing. So really appreciate, again, the creativity of Dr. Chartier and her team in moving into that central area that can move us forward.
Thank you.
The last item I have is a success story, and I want to shine the spotlight one more time on the Southwest Spotlight Singers who took grand champions at Chicagoland this weekend. There are probably people sitting at this table who participated. Luke, the grand champion for the, for the district from Southwest, they took in their festival division. They were grand champions. They won for best choreography. They also entered a solo competition, and I, the gentleman's name is escaping me, so.
Desan Wilson.
And the interesting part about it, he took for best vocals in a vocal competition, and he had never been in any other competition. So that's pretty cool as well. So, first time competing in that as well. And Joe McCabe left, but he is Colin's father, and Colin's in the combo as well, and Joe McCabe is, is an extraordinary musician and teacher at Lombardi, but he also does the combo for Southwest. And that one is right now being debated whether or not that they will win that award as well. So it was a big outing for Southwest High School, and I'd be remiss also, last weekend, Rhapsody in Red, the show choir from Nashville, went to Nashville, Tennessee, from East High School. And they ended up being grand champions of their open class. They won for best vocals and best visuals as well. So extend our congratulations to them. And then there's a lot coming up that students are going to be engaging in and traveling. So we're monitoring things very closely, but we've got DECA coming up and HOSA and all sorts of great stuff for kids. So our students are very, very engaged right now out, out and about outside of Wisconsin. So it's making some of us, well, some are still in Wisconsin, but it's making some of us a little nervous, but we're monitoring very, 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 very closely. And I know their teachers are, are preparing well in the event that they would travel. So congratulations again to Southwest Spotlight Singers and Rhapsody in Red from East High School. And that concludes it.
All right. Next is monitoring reports. That'll be facilitated by Laura McCoy.
Thank you, Brenda. We're going to get an update on multi-level systems of support behavior.
As the team comes forward to the table, they have been working very hard in preparation for this, and I know they have video clips in here for you as well. So, looking forward to the presentation and the update for the board.
Good evening. What the team is about to share with you is the culmination of approximately five years of dedicated work towards equitable practices in how we handle discipline in our district. The data is a reflection of the hard work and commitment by our board, teachers, support staff, building leaders, district office staff. Truly a team approach towards ensuring that all of our students have a fair shot and are able to experience more time in the classroom to learn directly from our professionally-trained educators. That isn't to say that this journey has been easy, or that we don't still have struggles with finding the best strategy to help some students regulate their behaviors. But the Green Bay area public school district community has shown a commitment to learning and growing, to recognizing that not all students come to us with the skills, both academically and behaviorally, to achieve success, at least not yet. Our building leaders and teachers have grown in their understanding of the importance of culturally responsive practices and the role that plays in students feeling welcomed and supported and loved in our schools. So we're going to have a variety of, can you advance, Laurie, please? Of our team members come and present some information to the board. One more, please. Thank you. We'll be covering three main areas. First, first, some grounding and reminders about the law and policies that guide our work in decision-making when it comes to discipline. Then the team is going to cover the MLSS behavior information for you. And we'll conclude with talking about the Continuous Improvement Plan. I'm joined at the table with, by Claudia Hendrickson, Executive Director of Student Services. I'm going to turn it over to Claudia.
Good evening. What I'd like to start is to talk to you about the laws and the policies and the procedures that we are governed by. And there's basically five areas that we need to adhere to. The state statutes, board policy, the MLSS Multi-Level Systems of Support Guidebook that we've put out in electronic form and have made modifications to repeatedly throughout the last five years, as well as the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, otherwise known as IDEA. That one is the one I'm here to really speak to you basically the most about, because there are extra protections offered to students with disabilities due to years of marginalization and over-suspension of students with disabilities and removal from school. So there was law enacted that gave them additional protections, and those protections are that they cannot be suspended for more than 10 days in a school year without having a plan of provision in place. And a plan of provision needs to occur prior to the 11th day of any removal in school. And every other time a student with disabilities is removed thereafter, throughout the remainder of the year. So what that affords them is that they are not getting suspended for the sheer reason that they are in, in special education. It'll gives them due process rights that include a manifestation determination meeting. So prior to any disciplinary removal, a student with a disability must have a manifestation determination IEP meeting. And at that manifestation meeting, I won't go into depth, because that's in the report, but there's basically two questions you need to ask to determine whether or not the disability, or that the student's disability, that student's action was a manifestation of his or her disability. We don't base that on categories. If you have a learning disability, but you've had a longstanding history of behavioral concerns, we would take that into consideration. We would look at the files and the history, and are there patterns? Is it certain days, certain behaviors, certain times of year, to determine if there's a pattern? So if it is, one, a direct relation to the student's disability, or two, if we did not follow the IEP as implemented, then we must determine that it is a manifestation of their disability, and more laws come into place and more guidance. And that is that a student cannot be removed from their placement, immediate school that they're at, unless the parent agrees to a move. And, and those cases, the move has got to be related to the student themselves and reasons that they would not be able to continue to be successful in that building, in that school. Okay? Along with that, there also has to be discussion around whether or not, we've had lots of guidance around reduced days, and the fact that students with disabilities cannot be put on, on reduced days because of a behavioral incident. Again, it has to be an IEP-related reason due to the, of need of that particular student before you can shorten a day. And so many times, people look at us and say, well, what about everyone else? Well, the students that have been the most marginalized are the ones that have the greater protections. And that's not to say that anybody wants anybody, as teachers, staff, students, families, to be exposed to dangerous. to be exposed to dangerous situations, but that's where we need to be working and putting our resources in. We also have up there a continuum of services, and this is for every student. Every student is supposed to be educated in the least restrictive environment. And for students with special education needs, we start with the general education environment without supports because you don't have to have a disability or a need in every single subject area. If you struggle with reading these days in particular, there are many, if not all, books on tape for those students to be able to access that information. And as the students over here are shaking their head, many of our regular education students utilize those strategies also. Then we look at special education with some support coming in the classroom. Then we look at some support with the students going out of the classroom to get additional interventions and additional instruction. Then we look at completely, we have focus programs in our district. So we have academic, we have behavior-focused programs, autism-focused programs, ID programs. We also have some hearing impaired and vision impaired, but we don't have any specific self-contained vision programs currently because we don't have any needs there. Then after all of those steps have been looked at, then we look at Menoka, which is an alternative setting for behavioral purposes. And after Menoka, we would look at community resources. So we have many contracts with outside agencies, therapeutic recreational sites is what they're actually called, where we pay money for the students to be there and be instructed there by staff outside of our district. From there, we have one-to-one tutoring. And I have to caution that when we look at one-to-one tutoring, for most of our students with disabilities, their reading levels are not at a level, or their comprehension level or their math level may not be at a level, or their attention, ability for attention might not be at a level that a one-to-one, that tutoring would be of value to them. And online is our very last choice because many, if not most, of our students with disabilities are already behind. To do online independently without support, without somebody guiding them and redirecting them has been shown to not be successful. And there have also been other court cases across the country related to those things happening in other districts. That does not happen in ours. So with that, I'll move on to the next. Oh, I forgot the one thing to say that about the suspensions. We have been cited from the Department of Public Instruction for the, over-suspension of students with disabilities and African-American males. So we are, that means that we have consistently for more, three or more years, been at least twice or three times as likely to suspend students with disabilities and/or African-American students than their white counterparts. So that's something we need to be considering when we're looking at equity and cultural responsiveness. So then we look at our out-of-school suspensions, and we are doing, we look at all of them because of the disproportionality. We keep a close eye on that. We're also looking at other different subcategories, but the ones that stick out the most tend to be, and the ones we're paying the most attention to are the students with disabilities and African-American students. So as you can see, we've steadily declined. Now, the last column for both students with disabilities and out-of-school suspension for African-Americans and then student, out-of-school suspensions for African-Americans with disabilities is getting lower and lower. And then you'll see we're only up till January of this year. But the other categories are going down at a rate somewhat similar. But we've put a lot of things in place since the beginning of this time. And we have the fidelity of implementation checks. We have charter schools now that we are trying to have more diverse opportunities for students to be successful, not just in the traditional classroom-type settings. We have, the equity department's been added. We do culturally responsive professional development, ongoing, trauma-sensitive professional development, restorative practices, PD for special ed-focused staff and admins. So in our behavior focus, in our autism focus, they have an opportunity every month to attend professional development with one another after school for pay so that they can learn more about strategies, they can problem solve with each other, and get ideas and learn from each other. We've just begun doing more professional development for paraprofessionals. In this past early release, we did a specific one for all of the paraprofessionals that we have, we call them floaters, in case there are people that are out sick and we don't have enough coverage. We want to make sure we cover our IEP-mandated classrooms in particular, so students that have one-to-one aids, we want them to be trained. So we gave them some NVCI training and we gave them some additional training on what to expect from different disabilities and different categories. And that was pretty well received. Finally, one of the, did you want to add? Finally, one of the, the next page? We want to talk about seclusion and restraint because that also falls under my responsibility to oversee that. And Act 125 is a law around seclusion and restraint that went into effect in 2011. And I don't know if many of you know, but it was just recently, the new guidance came out Friday and it's made it even more strict, the rules and the guidance around it. But Green Bay Public Schools has been doing many of the things that they're now mandating us to do. We've been doing that as a mandate district-wide. We've always gone above and beyond. We've always made sure that the parents were not just notified of the seclusion restraint, but that they were given the seclusion restraint paperwork. That is now going to be a mandate. We've asked our SROs in our schools to ensure that they're putting seclusion and restraints in, that we're reporting them, and we report them to the board yearly. I know you know that. But there's, again, we, our focus is on being proactive. So we have, we've been using the nonviolent crisis intervention. We're going to be having folks go to the PRO Act. It's another intervention program that spends 75% of its time looking at preventative actions as opposed to reactive, seclusionary, or restraint actions. We're also looking at Ross Green's work, and there's a lot of information out there about ideas from him that are, again, more proactive, student, adult relationships. We are still providing the NVCI training, but again, a very big renewed focus on the preventative thing, pieces of the NVCI. We don't, we are having less and less of the seclusion and/or restraint trainings and more and more of let's be proactive. Now, the law still requires that somebody in every single building be trained, and we have multiple people in our buildings all trained. So we are again, over and above what we need to do. Okay, so I think right now all we're doing is we're in a holding pattern from DPI to make sure that we are following the guidance that they gave. They were supposed to have guidance up Friday, but I checked and they do not have that guidance up yet. Surprise, surprise. So at this time, I can turn it over to Katie, Ellen, Ellen Krieger. I probably talked too long, sorry.
Good evening. The one last, I believe, last piece of the law that is out there is Title IX. If you're not aware, Title IX is part of the Education Amendment Act of 1972. And what it does is it protects students from discrimination or harassment based on sex in any educational activity or program. So under Title IX, what's a little bit different than most of the other behaviors is, the behavior does not have to occur at school or on school grounds for Title IX to come into play. It can be brought into school if it, if the behavior is so severe or pervasive or objectively offensive that it would affect or deprive a student's access to their educational program or activity. So that's the one little bit difference that Title IX affords students some extra protections. If a Title IX issue or a behavior is brought that might be considered Title IX to the district, the district has four responsibilities. They are to investigate, stop, prevent, and remedy. So the very first step is to investigate, to determine if the incident actually falls under Title IX. And since the addition of my position to the district, we have looked a little bit more closely at the events that fall under as they're recorded in IC to ensure that they meet the definition that would, that would afford a student a Title IX protection because we want to make sure that the students have the protections that they are granted under the law. So we have been trying to look closely at that to make sure that we are recording them properly. If Title IX applies, the next thing I usually do is work with the principals to determine the interim measure that needs to be put in place immediately to ensure student safety while an investigation occurs. Then we also look at how to not only just remedy that specific incident, but how to prevent those types of incidents from occurring in the future. So it's a multi-step process for Title IX. I think I discussed last week, and if you were present or if you were following Title IX, there are new regulations that are being proposed. They are currently pending in the Office of Management and Budget that would make significant changes to how Title IX cases would be investigated. So we have been waiting since mid-November for them to be released. The, there is a lot of discussion out there as to what might happen. My best guess at the moment, because this is the federal government, but my best guess is it will be released sometime mid-April. That tends to be when they tend to release most of their new initiatives. So that is, I'm a part of a national listserv, and that is what the speculation is, is that the delay is because they're going to issue it when they tend to issue the other initiatives that they have. There is also a new initiative that Secretary of Education Betsy DeVos issued on February 26th that is aimed at combating sexual assault in K-12 schools. So we are currently trying to review that new initiative to see how it would affect our district.
Ellen, you talked about the fact that you, as you begin that investigation of Title IX when it comes forward, can you speak just a little bit about how, when you do that investigation and review of what has been brought forward? Have you ever overturned or sent back to a principal and said it does meet the standard or does not? And if so, is that something that you've done? And you know what I'm saying? So that, okay.
Yes. One of the first things that I do is I review the incident in IC. There is a somewhat of a, I don't want to say misconception, but kind of a misconception as to what actually qualifies as a sexual assault or sexual harassment. The government has kind of strict definitions, and that's one of the things, too, that they are also looking at as part of the new initiative, or the new proposed regulations of changing that definition. So I, it's different than what most people might perceive to be a sexual assault or a sexual harassment. So that's the very first thing I do is I try to look at the event to see if it meets the federal definition of that. So there are many times that I will go back to as building administration and ask them for more information because sometimes what's recorded in IC isn't always a full, comprehensive, detailed explanation of the event. So I always like to see if we can get more information. And then I try to talk through of, you know, what is, what is the actual definition of either sexual assault or sexual harassment and try to discuss with them if they feel that it meets. And also, the biggest question for Title IX is, is there been a deprivation of access to educational programs or activities? If there's not, it's not necessarily a Title IX incident. That doesn't mean it's not a behavior incident that we want to do something about, but it may not fall under Title IX protections. So I have that conversation oftentimes with building administration, and it may require building administrators to change an entry that may have been made by a staff member, and then they should be going back to the staff member to explain why. And I try to leave an open communication that people can call and discuss with me further.
Can, there's a, in your memo, there's a statement that says, and I think this is the, well, anyway, the new, I'll give you the page number, page seven toward the bottom. The new Title IX regulations, it says the proposed changes will provide alleged perpetrators with significantly more rights than existing current law. Can you explain what that means?
Yes. This has been one of the toughest things in the waiting period for me and is causing me some concern. The current administration is, the Obama administration, when they started this, it came out and they were obviously pro-victim. And most of the rights fell on the side of the victim. The current administration is swinging the pendulum the other way and is going to provide alleged perpetrators with significantly more rights in the fact that they are going to be able to get most of, most, if not all, of the investigation materials that would be available as we do our investigation. And there's some concern, and I think that's part of the delay, is the majority of the people that understand Title IX understand that that is not necessarily a positive thing.
Thank you. Christina?
Thanks, Ellen. Is the, but the definition of sexual harassment isn't, and you don't intend, see that changing? The definition will remain?
I do believe they are looking at changing that to be a little bit more consistent with the law, with the case law that's been out there.
Okay. So their, I'm sorry, so their definition will change based on case law? Can you explain what you mean by that? Sorry.
Essentially, I'm trying to, trying to do this without making it a long convoluted process because it is part of that. Right now, there's a Title IX, for the most part, people think of colleges and universities. And so there's a clear act that colleges and universities need to follow, and that defines what a sexual assault is. And it also kind of talks about sexual harassment in some respects. What they're going to do, or they want to do with the proposed regulations, is impose everything that's imposed on a college on a K-12 institution. So what they are talking about doing is for sexual harassment, they're going to add quid pro quo, which is, which is out there, but it's also going to apply to school employees who may sexually harass a student. And that's what part of this new initiative is. It's pretty much, it includes student on student, but the new initiative by Betsy DeVos on February 26th is pretty much aimed at staff-to-student sexual assault. And that's kind of twirled around this change in the definition. They're kind of tweaking it to add that as well. And they are also changing the new definition to say that it's unwelcome conduct on the basis of sex that is so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive that it effectively denies a person equal access to school participation. That's what they say the definition is going to be. We tend to follow that already. That's kind of the definition that our district and I follow as our district. So in that respect, that won't be that much changed for us.
Can I read, can I, can I read the definition that I have? That I was, I was curious, like, what the definition actually is? And can I, can I read this to you? And I want you to tell me if this is correct, based on your understanding. So sexual harassment occurs when a person is subject to unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, or other verbal or physical conduct of a sexual nature to such an extent that it alters the conditions of the person's that it alters the conditions of the person's employment and creates an abusive working environment." So does that kind of describe kind of your working understanding of the?
That's Title VII. That's, yeah, that's for staff. Yeah. So Title IX is student only.
Okay, so that would, okay, so that's the difference. I got it. Thank you. Thank you for that. You're good.
Ellen serves as our student discrimination discipline and titles, Title IX coordinator. Thank you, Ellen.
And Claudia brought her to the district, and Legals took her.
No hard feelings there. And the important thing, Claudia's not bitter.
Pages eight through 10 of the memo outline and highlight many of the behavior supports that we have throughout the district. Even though these positions have multiple roles, they do serve as extra supports, and I thought it was important that we take a really good look at the number of people in different roles throughout the district that are there to support our kids and help our teachers. In addition to those roles, this district has dedicated a lot of funds into alternative programs. These aren't cheap, these programs that we offer, but we also know that we have an increased graduation rate, which I'll talk about later, ultimately impacts our community positively because we recognize that not all of our students are successful in a traditional school setting. So we, as a district, long before myself, long before I came here, made a commitment to offering different pathways. So that's kudos to our school board and the people that came before Claudia and I, who made a commitment to making sure that all of our students have an opportunity for success. I am joined now by Katie and Katie. Katie Selzer is our Director of Pupil Services and District Equity Coordinator, and Katie Devillers is our Associate Director of Pupil Services.
Hi, everyone. While we're still on this slide, I know that there's people in the audience, you know, MLSS belongs to every staff member, no matter what their title in the district. Everybody works towards this for our students. But there are people in the audience that this is the focus of their work for behavior, and I'd like to recognize them. So if they could please stand up. That is our universal behavior team members back there. And our special ed P S D. Thank you. Next slide, Lori. I have the opportunity in the next two slides to share some positive data with you in our two-and-a-half-year implementation of multi-level systems of support for behavior. This data, this first one is our district triangle data. This data is separated into three tiers. As a reminder, this is an update, but as a reminder, we service students with supports in universal or Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. The main difference between those three tiers is the interventions, practices, strategies that we use and the level of support that students need. The goal on this slide in the green, yellow, and red refers to a research-based goal from the National Center on PBIS. And underneath it, it's hard to see, but it lists some referrals. Those referrals are administrator-required referrals. That means that those administrators are called by classroom teachers to support because the behavior is either chronic or severe enough that it needs to be dealt with outside the universal classroom setting. So you can see the differences at each tier. You can also, we started in 2017-18 with our implementation, and the National Center on PBIS, we states that in the universal Tier Two, we want to catch the most students. And so 80% or more of our students, we want them to fall in that universal or Tier One. 15% are lower in our Tier Two, and then 5% are lower in Tier Three, based on those referrals that you see on the slide. You can see that in 2017-18, there's obviously work done before we started even collecting data, and that's true. And that we met fidelity of implementation in 2017-18 at all three tiers, as well as 2018-19, we met fidelity in all three tiers. And the last row there, 2019-20, was only, as you can see, through January 31st last year, we met fidelity. And as a comparison, I wanted to tell you that this year through January, for universal, we were at 92.67%, Tier Two, 4.21%, and at Tier Three, 1.66%. So again, the work we've done in the last two-and-a-half years has paid off, and we are meeting fidelity. Next slide shows two more tools that we use to help us know if we're on track for implementation with fidelity. The first one is the Tiered Fidelity Inventory, or TFI. The TFI is taken by a MLSS leadership team. It focuses on three aspects of implementation: team practices, implementation practices within a school, and evaluation practices. The goal, as you can see, same research base, the Wisconsin, or the National PBIS Center, is 70%. We took data for two years here, our initial year, 2017-18 and 2018-19, and we met the 70% or higher fidelity and increased in those two years. The second, the self-assessment survey is different. That is taken by everyone in the school. It's a perception survey. It indicates their perception of how they're implementing. It focuses on non-classroom systems like hallways, lunchrooms, playgrounds, on school-wide discipline, on classroom management systems, and on systems to support individual students who struggle most with behavior. We did not ask anyone to take it in 2017-18, our first year, but we did in the 18-19, as you can see, 80% or higher is the goal for fidelity of implementation, and we met that goal in the 18-19 school year. We have more work to do, but this data is very promising in the short time that we've been doing it, and we feel confident that we're on the right track for our MLSS system. Yep, I will. Next up, we have a video for you, because data is one thing, but listening to the practitioners, doing the hard work in the school is a whole nother thing. And we wanted to give you some context around by which you could really have a clear understanding at least four of our schools of the successes, challenges, and the intricate pieces of a journey for MLSS for behavior. So we went out to two elementary schools, Sullivan and Wilder, and two middle schools, Washington and Edison, and we asked them to tell us about their MLSS journey. Our hope is that you'll get a deeper understanding of the context of MLSS, and you'll see the great work of not just these four schools, but think about it across the district, based on our great data that we shared with you. It's about 12 minutes long, just so you know.
I think one of the biggest challenges is we had to have a shift in mindset of what the multi-level systems of support, really what the true purpose of it was. Back a few years ago, people felt like it was the gateway to special education. It was the hoops that we had to jump through to get more support. And we are really trying to focus now on how can we best serve our learners and get them what they need, and not how do we get them out of our classroom and have someone else deal with the situations that are arising. So we've really worked very hard on changing that mindset and focusing on the whole child.
Some of the barriers with behavior is, it's unlike a student that has a reading difficulty, because our staff are very talented, have the professional development in how to handle those kids that may have a decoding problem, for example. So we have the tools. We have the support. Behavior becomes emotional from a caregiver standpoint, so some of the barriers are not necessarily caregiver burnout, but having people understand what behavior is and what drives it.
There's not a single student that wants to come to school and make school a challenge for a teacher, and there's not a single parent that sends their child to school and says, "Go make it difficult for teachers today." But it happens. And when it happens, it's usually connected to a reason that we might not fully understand.
It's a weekly collaboration. It's a bi-weekly team meeting for Tier Two that we are always reviewing the data and always reaching out to the other staff members to come and help us collaborate so that we can help the student with their needs.
Over the years, we've proven that the things that we've tried to implement, the systems, have been successful, and that builds a lot of trust in the staff. And when we try to make a change or implement something new, they have trust that they should give it a try. So it's that trust in the system and the trust in the leadership of PBIS that I think allows us to move forward.
But MLSS has put a framework around which our team can then operate and then make decisions about what's best for the student.
And I think our biggest success along the way is that we've always been very consistent. The admin support has been very consistent over the 10 years. All the admins that we have had have been very involved and supportive of everything our PBIS team wanted to do.
I think another success is that we've moved it beyond an event. I think, Lindsay, you spoke to that as well. It's not an event that you attend to get help for a student or to meet the need at this moment, but it's a process. And I think we built some systems here that are connected, interconnected, so that it's an ongoing mindset that we have, that we're always looking for how we can help the kids.
I think we've tried to mirror our behavior MLSS process with the academic MLSS process, where we're using school-wide data to make decisions, but also allowing teachers to give their voice when there are concerns about behavior in the classroom as well. So we're better at incorporating data from an academic and a behavior, an analysis process.
Start out by looking at our school-wide data as an instructional leadership team, and then within our CLT processor, within our CLTs, our grade levels also take a look at the data as well, too.
Behaviors that are happening in the classroom might be connected to a child's reading level. They might be connected to how they feel about math. They might be connected to an experience that they've had, connected to a topic that we're talking about in social studies. We don't know until we ask the questions and really use the systems that we have in place to look at the data, to make decisions about how to better support our students.
What we try to do here, while there's a social-emotional lens, which encompasses the whole child, so instead of being reactive to behavior, hopefully, we're using data to inform our decisions. And that's where MLSS came in, is the tiered supports and the training that was provided to us as a PBIS team to implement the different tiered systems.
Students that are not academically where they need to be, or students that are still having challenges behaviorally, will get a plan put into place within CLTs. Every week, when the teachers or the interventionist signs students up for our learning support team, those individuals are asked to identify what needs. Is it an academic need? Is it a literacy or math? Or is it a behavioral need?
So last year was problem solving. This year, we reintroduced it. But the next step, then, is the regulation piece. So if this strategy's not working for me, I can keep trying other strategies, but it might not take away the social-emotional component of it. For example, I can ignore you and walk away, but I could still be upset, which could impact my school day. So now, we're moving into zones of regulation, and then identifying your feelings, but then also taking steps and building skills about what can I do with those emotions.
I think the beginning part of our journey at Washington was me coming in new, learning that we had the structures. Coming into a district and having those systems in place already at the district level was greatly appreciated.
I think it's really well laid out, again, being new to Sullivan and to Green Bay, the clarity that the MLSS process provides for me, that I can go back to the foreshare, cheat sheet, I call it, and say, oh, are we checking to make sure that those universal supports are in place before we jump too far ahead down the, now to the next tier? So that's provided a lot of clarity for me in those conversations supporting teachers.
Through our process, I think we have a very caring and supportive staff. I think they have implemented our universal behavior instructional practices very well. They're teaching, reteaching behavior expectations when needed. They're acknowledging students who are engaging in the appropriate behavior. So I think we have a fairly strong universal.
We have a process now where teachers, after they've utilized these universal supports that we've learned over the years, they can request for behavioral assistance. Once they request for assistance, we gather feedback, we gather data from all the teachers that might have that student. And then we utilize that feedback and data to decide what we want to do next, to decide what we think that student needs for supports. We also roll into our Tier Two, then. We have a very strong Tier Two team led by Don Orfield, and we meet twice a month, where we're able to talk about the kids that may need some Tier Two interventions.
One thing that I've noticed just this year, a shift in thinking as well, is we've had a lot of training on trauma and form practices with our staff, and I feel like we're starting to have the true belief that if our students are engaged, then they're going to have academic success.
And the teacher and the student then have kind of a restorative conference. They have scripts that they read, where the teacher welcomes them back, but the student also tells the teacher, here's what I need, and here's what I need help from you on.
I think to add to the points, too, I think we've really worked to build a capacity through professional learning that's really embedded in every step of the way. So when we were doing CLTs, we were embedded in those CLTs, learning alongside, doing the social-emotional. It's a whole-team approach, and I think that builds the capacity for at every level, people are there to support. And that's, that just means that we're all, everybody, every person on our team is centered around that child.
We try to be proactive in giving kids skills that they will need to self-regulate, and some of that could be, we've had trauma training, we've had training around Tier Two interventions. We're a CHAMP school, so there's universal interventions. We've done universal instruction in the guidance area around problem solving in order to help kids figure out our little problems, big problems, and how to prevent little problems from becoming big problems.
I feel very comfortable going to any one of my three admin team members and saying, I need help with an academic issue, with a student concern, et cetera, and I know that they're going to be there to support me. I know that my student service team is here to support me as well, too.
Then within that team meeting, you have all of the teachers that work with that student at the table at the same time to have the conversation. You bring in student services as a support to provide additional information or additional resources that they might have available within their department. And you have the associate principal that represents that grade level attending the meeting as well. So all of the players are at the table in order to make decisions about what needs or what changes need to be made to support a student.
We're lucky enough here to have an amazing behavior support team, and we've also had district staff come in and help us in areas that would be included in the MLSS.
The Edison Edge team, their main role is to help the teachers when they're in the classroom with that correction and intervention that needs to take place while the teacher is trying to teach.
I think the success is staff are comfortable and aware of the process. So if they do have the need for a student, like I said, we classify it in a social-emotional realm, so if they do have a need, they feel very comfortable with the process of how do I get help for this student? And it's not a matter of, this student needs help, so you take care of it. It's a team effort.
So we really have that team approach here at Sullivan, that the students come first. We are here to support them however we can, and if we need to support them with addition, with thinking outside the box, we do do that. And I feel that we do a really nice job here of really, really bringing the students first.
Our behavior supports is what allows students to increase that instructional time, which will only positively affect the academics for those students.
And I think just knowing when students are better able to regulate their emotions and their behavior, they're going to be more involved in the academic activities going on in a classroom. And plus, that's going to improve scores and performance academically. In addition to engagement at school, could have an impact on attendance. So all of those components that we're addressing behavior through is going to impact attendance at school. at school and academics.
If we really want to care about kids and get them the skills they need in the social-emotional realm, is you do need qualified staff that are willing to process through students, be a mentor, build those trusting relationships, and then help them with the skills that they need.
It's a good system to have. It helps us be deeper thinkers about how to support our students.
Thank you. Some of the folks that were in that video are here from Edison and Washington. Could you please stand?
And at this time, let's bring Renee up. Renee Everie is our District Alternative Education Administrator and Hearing Officer, and she's going to cover the last section for us on pre-expulsion hearings.
Good evening. So first, I would like to talk about the process for the disciplinary hearings. What it would start with is a student makes an inappropriate behavior decision. And it could be that the school calls to make the recommendation for disciplinary hearing or just kind of wants to know, you know, what do we think about, what's going on there? So we have a team that gets together and we do, and we did share with all of the administrators, a disciplinary hearing determination process. But every single student and every single behavior and every single incident is different. And so it's always nice to be able to talk through it. We look and make sure that it is a school versus a community incident. And recently, Melissa Thiel-Coller sent out some clarification on when does a community incident possibly become a school incident and sent that out. So that was great information. We look to see if it is a student with a disability or a 504 plan or not. And a lot of times, we have to ask for more specific behavior. We need, or I'm sorry, more specific information. We need to know the severity of the behavior that occurred. We like to know about past incidents and is this a recurring behavior or has there been problems in the past? Or is there a frequency issue that we need to be worried about? We also look to see if there's victims and how did that impact their education? I also look in IC to see what kind of interventions have been done with students who have had frequent behaviors. And there are a couple of different areas in IC. There's a counseling tab, the PLP tab, and the RTI tab, which goes along with Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. So we go to see, have things been done? I also look in their digital cumulative to find out, has there been community supports brought in to make sure that we have got enough support for that student? And then, of course, I always recommend and make sure that other schools are consulting the MLS documents with that little, as the gentleman said in the video, the cheat sheet to make sure that they are following everything like that. And then we also, and it's nice with my office being close to the behavior specialists, I consult with them to find out what kind of role did they play? After we do all of that, then we determine, should it be a pre-expulsion hearing? Should it be a manifestation determination meeting? Should it be recommended for possible expulsion hearing? Or is it neither? And some of the cases, when it's neither, we might recommend what's called a stay-at-school contract, where the family is brought in to say, you know, here are some more interventions that we will put into place. Here are some changes that we need to see from the student. And if things still do not work out, then we could recommend a placement change. So that's the process. As you look at the data there in the chart, you can see that there were 63 placement changes due to hearings and/or manifestations as of January 31st. Six students received a stay-at-school agreement. Two expulsions had taken place. And 10 students stayed at their school due to a 504 IEP decision. But do want to point out that many of those were students who re-offended at Menorca and stayed then at Menorca. There are several options when students are removed. And it could be that they are recommended to go to Menorca, but we have to keep in mind that there's limited space there. It could be recommended that they are to go to online. But, and we are working on being more engaging for that, but to keep kids engaged while they're online is a difficult task. There might be additional options for students in special education with behavior needs in the community, such as Advocates is one of the community resources that Claudia had alluded to. And then there are community teams that come in, and we'll talk about just community resources that we can partner with for the schools. There is a financial impact on moving a student, though. Menorca, when I'm asked, and I was principal there for a couple of years, too, is what is the magic of Menorca? It is a very much smaller student to adult ratio. And that just provides more resources for that student. So that is not intended to be a final fix where the student stays at Menorca, but it does provide the student with more resources while we're working on their behaviors. There are paraprofessionals in most of the classrooms at Menorca. Transportation is provided to all elementary students and any secondary students if it is part of their IEP. For the online tutoring, the financial impact there is that we provide, students can work on as much as they want to while they're online, but we do provide them three hours per week with a one-on-one tutor, in which we have to pay that teacher both their salary for those hours, any transportation, and then also prep time. And then there's community resources that do have a cost for us, too. One of the big things that we want to make sure when a student is removed is that we do provide them, and it's usually social skills instruction or instruction on investigating behavior, so that they do have time to process, time to think about what they've done, and then try to get them integrated back into a traditional school setting.
Thank you. Don't let Renee fool you. What is the magic of Menorca? If you've met the staff there, you know what the magic is. Thank you, Renee. Claudia, continuous improvement.
All right. So we're never satisfied with where we're at. We're always looking to improve. So we have planned professional development moving forward. We've been doing professional development. We're expanding our professional development, figuring out different ways to do professional development because we know the sit-and-get or the one-time big heroic thing doesn't always move our numbers. So we want, we're looking at different ways that we can do professional learning. We have the district equity plan, which we are refining on a regular basis so that we can improve what we're doing with that and ensure that we have staff trained in microaggressions and other culturally sensitive pedagogy. Participation with the Green Bay area, with the GBA, we work very closely with them to make sure that we are continuing to grow our staff and doing it in a respectful manner. We're exploring the expansion of some of alternative programming. We recognize that we are having more and more students that are learning differently than we all learned as students, or many of us anyways, learned as students. And so we need to meet the needs of those students. So we're looking at different placement options. One of those, you all know J-Doll, and N-E-W looking to separate into bigger buildings so that they can expand. J-Doll's adding a larger proportion of students going on to their blended online. And then they come in once a week to go over what they've been doing with the teacher. Continued collaboration with the MLSS academics. Nancy and I and our departments meet regularly, and she will soon be having updates about some great work we're doing collaboratively to move special education teachers and general ed teachers together for the best interest of all the students. We've explored some social-emotional curriculum. Most of the social-emotional curriculum that's out there comes at a quite hefty cost to sustain. So we've already had CEDs out there for our social workers and our counselors to provide professional development, or to the students, to provide instruction to students and support staff members. We're looking to expand upon that and make sure that what we're doing is universal and it is culturally responsive. We're increasing access to mental health providers. We had six in our buildings.
Correct.
And we're soon to have seven. We're working collaboratively with a partnership of school districts as well as providers, which is a very unique thing in this state, where we are not competing, but we're rather supporting each other. And when a provider comes available, we meet, we look at rubrics of where staff are at, and we decide who the next person or school will be that will get that provider based on the matches. So then rewriting our special education curriculum, behavior. And choice, we have a curriculum called Choices and Challenges, and then we have, that's for students that are somewhat on this autism spectrum, it had been traditionally. And then we have, oh wait, that's Navigating Social Dynamics. And then Choices and Challenges is the behavior one for students with emotional behavioral issues. They haven't been updated since 2011, so we have a group working on updating those, putting them into grade bands so that we have grade bands from early on that is actually doing specific instruction towards the areas of need for our students. And many of us know students with autism and students with behavior issues struggle differently, and your response to that is different. We have had Dr. Shroki Holly came earlier at the beginning of the year. He's coming back further in the year, April, first week in April, to work with our middle schools. Because when we looked at our perception data, as we do on a regular basis, we noticed that the staff felt that they had relationships with the students, but the students didn't necessarily feel that they had safe adults to go to in the buildings in many cases. So Mr., Dr. Holly is going to be working specifically with the middle school, all the middle schools, all the staff in the middle schools will be coming and working with him, starting this year, and we have plans for that to continue next year. And he is also going to be working with the district administrative staff, or all the staff here at the district office, to look at where we are on our journey of cultural responsiveness and growth mindset activities. So I feel like we've got a lot of things going in our favor. The trajectory is going up. We've got all the right people in all the right seats, and I think we're doing extraordinary things for our students.
Questions? In closing, can you advance one slide, please, Laurie? I'm really proud of this team that spoke to you tonight. I'm really grateful for Claudia's leadership in this area. We don't have all the answers, and we're not perfect. We've been asking our teachers and administrators for the last five years to look beyond moments of frustration that they have with a single individual student and imagine what that student's future could look like and what the community's future could look like if we just chose the path that doesn't give up on our children. I thank the Board of Education for your continuous support and belief and trust in us. And we open it up to questions. Any questions, anybody? Christina.
I don't have a question. I just have a quick comment. This was great. Thank you for bringing your whole team. I'm sure this took a lot of time. The video was fantastic. So thank you for coming forward. I really appreciated how you took all the different pieces and everyone was able to sort of speak to their area of particular focus. So thank you. That helps us to learn more about you as well and your area. This is really hard stuff, and it's challenging. It's challenging personally, it's challenging interpersonally, it's challenging at the systems level. And what I've always valued with your team, Vicky, is that we can have really honest, difficult conversations that may be uncomfortable, but we come back and we keep at it. And I feel that that's happening within your team. So I challenge you all to stay in that place because that's how we'll grow. Only we'll grow when we are uncomfortable, but we're in it together. And it was really nice to hear about this tonight, so thank you.
If I could just follow up on that. And Vicky, you set the tone for that team. Good job.
I certainly appreciate the fact that we are, you know, in the effort to find balance that we're taking a look at trauma-informed care and doing things like MLSS. I do, however, want to ask if we, have we gone, have we gone so far to one direction that, I've heard, and it's not, it's not been anything that's risen to the level of me making a formal inquiry with the superintendent, but I, you know, when I get out in buildings, I do hear some things that, I'm wondering, have we gone so far away from consequences that we have, you know, I've had people tell me that the kids think they run the place I certainly am not a, I'm not a fan of, you know, big suspensions. I'm glad that kids are in school more and that we're reducing, you know, especially out-of-school suspension. But I'm wondering if, you know, if there's no consequences piece available for many situations, that there's just a scripted, you know, a scripted statement, which I have on an anecdotal level heard, is not taken seriously or doesn't appear to be taken seriously by many kids, that you can do, there's things in the book that I won't go into great detail about here, but there's, there's things in the book that you can do a bunch of times without any, any major consequences. So I just, since that piece didn't seem to be represented at all here, I, in the interest of balance, wanted to get some thoughts on that.
I would like to speak to that. So we, in our report, we were more in-depth, but we've had 100 and, I just was looking at it. We've had 138 hearings last year, as well as 61 manifestation determination meetings. And in, there's another graph in here that shows how many of those students were removed from their school and placed either at Menorca or online or shortened days with one-to-one tutorings. And the vast majority of them, regardless if it was a manifestation of their disability or not a manifestation of their disability, for students with disabilities and students without disabilities, they were removed. So if there are cases where people feel like they were not removed, I would welcome them to bring them. Safety is our first priority. It really is. And I feel as though we're responding very adequately and swiftly, putting interventions in place and trying to follow the law with the constraints we have. And I know there are some where we were getting ready to move a student to a hearing, and the parent said, oh, wait, my student has a disability. So at that point, and that's one of the things I kind of glossed over, I guess, as you'd say, Andrew, is that then we have a stay-put responsibility, and that's a federal law, that we have to keep that child, if they're in, while they're in a referral, in their placement. We've done many things to keep them safe. It might not be what everybody wants because everybody wants the student to be gone and everyone to feel safe and whatnot. But we have put many precautionary measures into place, and we've expedited those IEPs evaluations. On top of that, if it's guns, weapons, or serious bodily injury, we are able to move students to an interim alternative educational setting. And a far distant majority of that is at Menorca. And even there, we try to take precautions and put them in, make sure they're not with the student or that student or the student or that student. But ultimately, we're responsible for educating the students and helping them to be successful citizens once they're beyond our doors. So punishment only goes so far. But I do believe that we are punishing along with teaching. And I think it's a pretty fair, accurate way of doing things. Do, or maybe I don't And I think it's a pretty fair, accurate way of doing things. Do, or maybe I might not say that the right way, but I don't know if anybody else on the team would like to speak to that?
Vicky?
Yeah, I was just going to add, as Claudia mentioned, the goal of discipline, or you use the phrase punishment, is to change the behavior. If a student is continuing with a same or similar type of behavior, week after week, or day after day after day, the discipline has to progressively reflect that. That's what the LST teams are for in each of our schools. They're monitoring student behavior, so if we do see repeats, the punishment should increase, or the discipline should increase accordingly. In one area, Mr. Becker, I think that we still need to improve on, as I said to the board over three years ago, was getting back to our teachers when we do put some discipline in place. I fail at doing that well. We come to the board once a year to report to you the number of hearings. There's got to be a better way to make sure our teachers recognize that things are being done.
Rhonda?
So I'm just going to throw this out there, because I'm thinking about it the whole time you're talking. So sitting here roughly two and a half years ago, when I heard a presentation related to this, I believe it was a very different conversation. I think the terminology that was used, the approach, everything feels different to me. And I appreciate that very much. I look at this, and I look at the the plan, the continuous improvement plan of what to do about this. I think about talking about professional learning, talking about having a district equity plan. I think, as Ben mentioned a couple of times before, about having a district equity audit as well. And I think that's, without that, I'm hoping we can do that, and then think about maybe a plan. Just a little side note there. But it's, to me, what I'm, I'm coming back to, and I think about, we have another agenda topic that is related to a district investigator proposal. And I'm wondering what, how the two potentially intertwine. When we think about, we have more kids sitting in classrooms, which is wonderful for them. Thinking about maybe what that might mean sometimes for teachers. And I'm going to try to say this as clean as I can, without getting in trouble.
But would you say there's more kids sitting in classes? What do you mean? I just want to clarify.
To me, it looks like we're doing more to keep kids in classrooms, in educate, being, you know, in a position to be instructed, whether it be online and alternative classroom. So I feel, and I'm speaking for myself, that I'm hearing and I'm seeing a conversation that I did not hear or see two years ago. So I want to just acknowledge that first. But what I'm also thinking about as I'm hearing this is, is it possible that there are unattended consequences because of this? And so when I think about the other agenda item, when we talk about adding a district investigator, we talked about an increase in staff investigations. And I just, when I think about this, and I think about this as positive, and this is good work, but it feels like there could potentially be something, as a result of this, we are having some friction, some stress in the classroom, trying to weigh the two out, trying to be able to have teachers feel comfortable with what's going on in regards to this. And so when I look at that, I see the professional learning is the number-one continuous improvement plan. I think that's important. We talked about, Claudia, you mentioned Dr. Holly coming in and working with, I think that's a really great thing. And I believe that that is something that could help ease some of what's going on. I just, I don't know if they're on the same night in the agenda, but I feel like there's a connection. I just do, so. But I just wanted to say, thank you for that, and note that I did, I'm noticing a lot of difference in just the context and the approach in general, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Michelle?
I too want to thank you for your work. I think that the piece that your team brings us forward, the district and people out there may not recognize the fact that this is a larger group that comes together to learn with and from each other. So in years past, to your point, Rhonda, and I agree with you, in years past, it wasn't as cohesive and coherent. The MLS system is a total system with behavior and academics. And so John leads the academic side, Vicky leads the behavior side, but collectively, everyone comes together to learn with and from each other. So that has been an effort these last several years, that I think really, then everybody owns it. There are certain people on point held accountable for it, but at the end of the day, we all are accountable, and that's how you started tonight. So I appreciate you saying that, because it is the recognition that it takes everyone to be able to lift and make sure, as you, it's hard to sit here and listen to the suspension data that you provided. It's very troubling. It's very heartwarming to see that improvements are made. You talk about in the tiers, and tiers with fidelity. And I think Cindy mentioned in the video that, you know, with the language is really critically important, and it supports what Rhonda said. So we've come a long way in this area. We have a long way to go. And I think that we'd all recognize that. And I know that Dr. Holly coming will continue our journey, but I think that the continuous improvement around professional development is critical. And the lift, again, with everyone working collectively together, starts to really change the system for kids, and it's moving. It's on the right trajectory. There's a lot, lot to go, but a lot to be proud of. And you've done really hard work, and our students have, and our administration has. So thank you for that.
And when you touched on social, emotional curriculum, I've been reading everywhere. It's just coming into every feed there is. I'm really excited about just even hearing you say that at the table, and I'm hoping we can look into that. Thank you.
Brenda?
I just wanted to make sure that all board members were aware that there's a link in that handout on the very last page, the district equity plan. It's a thirty-page document, a Google document, that outlines all of the efforts that the Equity Department, and I'm sure in conjunction with People Services, and everybody else that cares about equity, yeah, teaching and learning. But I think that that's a great document to really give us a sense of the enormity of the work that's going on in our district around equity. And so I thank everybody in the room who's had a part in that. And I think that it's, I would encourage board members to read it, so that you know what's going on, so that as we look forward to improving, we're understanding where we are today. So thanks for that.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Can we do a, maybe a break?
Sure. Reconvene our meeting, and next up is our Inter-City Student Council Report. Turn that over to Luke.
All right. For ICSC stuff, weighted grades committee has been meeting still, except we haven't had a meeting since the last time I told you that we've been meeting, so I guess we haven't been meeting, but we're meeting more. Spring sports are starting up. Winter sports have ended. A lot of people are sad, especially my class senior season's ending. I was going to talk about show choir, but Dr. Langefeld stole my thunder. I'm all right.
You can give more detail than, since you were there.
It was a wonderful day. That was, that's a good way to put it. Academic Decathlon State is Wednesday through Friday this week, and East and Southwest are both going to that. DAKA State starts tomorrow, and it goes to Thursday, and Preble and Southwest are going to that. Solo Ensemble for our district, over fifty state qualifying groups, or soloists are going, which is awesome. That, those events, the middle school event was not this past Saturday, but the one before. And then the high school one was the one before that. East Polar Punch Team, Saturday raised $2,000 for the Special Olympics, which is awesome. Kaiser Newman from Preble is the state champ in the individual medley and the hundred fly for swimming. And he actually has got the second fastest time for the hundred fly in WIAA history. There's a Metro Math Meet on February twenty-fourth at Green Bay West, and Southwest took second. And out of all the schools, Southwest got second for the whole year. And we had a second-team qualifier for the Metro Math Team, all Metro Math Meet team. I said that right? Okay. Camden Zarnicki, and we had two first-team qualifiers, Annika Hanson and Ben Frieden, who you just met. And then ACT testing was on the third of March for juniors. So the juniors were stressing out about that, but everyone else was happy because they didn't have school. And there is National History Day on Saturday, and that's about it.
All right. Thank you, Luke. Next is the Legislative Liaison Report, and that'll be facilitated by Laura.
Thank you, Brenda. So I'm going to just start with a few bills that are getting some attention right now. Act 118, Claudia referred to it before, regarding student restraint and seclusion. This act requires student restraining and seclusion data to be reported to DPI, as well as school boards. It requires schools to convey a written incident report to parents. It requires that the principal meet with staff who participated in the incident to discuss the sequence of events and strategies to prevent future incidents. And it explicitly prohibits prone restraint. These changes increase the likelihood of reducing these practices and greater, and creating greater transparency for families. And this was signed by Governor Evers on March 2nd. This had the support of many advocacy organizations, public school organizations, and the Department of Public Instruction. Under the current, under current law, physical restraints mean a restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability of the pupil to freely move his or her torso, arms, legs, or head. Seclusion means the involuntary confinement of a pupil apart from other pupils in a room or area from which the pupil is physically prevented from leaving. I guess I had never really, I hadn't seen that, that language inhabit so explicitly spelled out. So I'm just, I just wanted to include that for everyone, for their information, so. And number two, the Senate Committee on Education will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March eleventh, on Senate Bill 789 authored by Alberta Darling and Jeremy Thiesfeld, which would expand the part-time open enrollment program and renames it with Course Choice Program. The expansion would increase the number of grades that may, that may, that they may participate, or that may participate from, oh, the number of grades that may participate from just high school to now include grades one through twelve. This would also allow virtual charter students, and I addressed this, I think, last month, of virtual charter school students to participate in athletics and other extracurriculars in their resident school district. Companion bill has already passed the State Assembly, so this hearing could clear the way for the Senate to concur on the bill in their last scheduled regular session date, which is March 26th. This would send the bill to Governor Evers for his approval. This bill is not supported by the WASB, because it expands the program to courses at all grade levels, without addressing how courses are actually defined in elementary grades, or how parents will transport young kids from one school to another in order to participate. It would also eliminate the ability of school districts to give preference to resident students and full-time open-enrolled students over students who want to attend classes on only a part-time basis. And then, number three, the governor, on February twenty-sixth, the governor vetoed, as I'm sure you all probably know by now, vetoed the Republicans' plan to use the budget surplus to offer tax cuts. The governor had offered a plan to increase school funding by 252 million, and to also provide property tax relief. Since it got vetoed, it appears that the likely outcome to this impasse is that the surplus funds will be made available in the 2021-23 state budget. And that completes my report.
Thanks, Laura. Next is district events. If there's anything anyone wants to announce. Luke gave us a full rundown of all the student events. All right, next is Board Member's School Visits Update. Christina?
Sure, for the sake of time, I'll just give one that I think is particularly exciting. I was at Fort Howard today, and with Untitled Town coming up at the end of April. There is an author, her name is Rosemary Wells. She does the, what is the book series? It's a very well-known child's book series. Anyways, doesn't matter. But anyways, she's coming, and she's going to do a two-hour session at Fort Howard, and they're going to dedicate a piece of art. But it's just a really cool, you know, way that we, I think our community provides resources to schools through community partnerships and bringing in local authors. So, and it's exciting because I get to be part of that through my job at the YW, too, so I get to wear multiple hats.
The Max and Ruby series.
Max and Ruby, thank you. Yep, so it'll be kindergarten first and second, and they're going to, she's going to do a reading, and then maybe also give out some signed books.
I went to a couple more music events. The Rhapsody in Revue, which also included a number of our other show choirs in the district, although Webster and Red Smith this time around. So it's always fun to see the differences between the grade school, middle school, and then the high school show choirs. Also, went to Wizard of Oz at Webster, which was a great show. And then also was at Menorca's Family Night last week, where they served delicious food to the families that were there, and got to chat and talk with a number of their staff. So that was good.
I went to Howe Elementary's Read Your Heart Out. It was in honor of Black History Month, and it was really a great presentation, a great opportunity. And then, having met one of our special education students from Southwest, or teachers, excuse me, she invited me to her classroom. I went there this morning, so it was a nice, nice event.
I too went to Rhapsody at East, which was kind of breathtakingly amazing. I came out of there going, what did I just see? It was so good, and so well done. On the twenty-fourth, I was at Fort Howard. I went with a Jefferson parent who's feeling a little anxious about the transition. And so we went together and met with the principal and took a tour, and spent actually quite a lot of time with her. And she was very generous with her time, and I came away feeling really good. And I think the parent did as well. So that was, that was on the twenty-fourth. On the twenty-fifth, I went to Jackson Elementary and spent time in Ann Clay Patch's bilingual classroom there, and got to kind of observe how she, how she spends her time, which is, was remarkably inspirational. And I'm hoping to do it, I'm hoping to do it again real soon. She had just, she had just gotten a new student just the day before from Puerto Rico. And you would never know that, that she was so, already so connected to that child, you would never know that that was a new student to our district. I was, when she told me, it was toward the end of my time there. I'm like, I couldn't believe it, so. And then, just this morning, I went over to Head Start and spent time with Sally Jansen, and, and just kind of got an oversight, overview of what the next year is going to be like as they do the work at Jefferson, and just kind of fulfill my duties as the liaison for- as, um, they, they do the work at Jefferson and, um, just, um, kind of fulfill my duties as the liaison for Head Start. And, um, got a whole bunch of stuff to read now. Um, but it was, it was a good meeting and I learned a lot, so that, that's it.
Rhonda?
I spent a few hours at West. I was invited in to talk to their building leadership last week.
All right, um, next we'll move to our teaching and learning, uh, and that'll be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Okay, I'm just gonna get Eric on the horn because he wanted to participate in. And then I would also move to reorder the organizational support so that Item E is read first because the other items are not items that Eric's gonna be in a position to vote on.
He has to abstain from the insurance votes.
I'm gonna put you on speakerphone.
I'll second her motion.
We're just voting to reorder the, uh, agendas that we can vote on all the things that you are eligible to vote on in succession. All right?
So we have a motion on the table to reorder and seconded by Christina. San- Sandy?
Shelton?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanden Hooven?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Head Start 2021 Continuation Application Summary as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Vanden Hooven?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
I move that the Head Start 2019-20 Self-Assessment as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Vanden Hooven?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried seven zero.
And that concludes our report.
All right, that next is Organizational Support and that'll be facilitated by Christina Shelton.
Thanks, Brenda. Um, I move that the Table of Organization be modified to include the position of District Investigator, 12-month seller group 13, um, and that the associated job description as presented be approved.
I'll second for the purposes of discussion.
Andrew?
Um, I move to postpone, uh, consideration of this motion until the, uh, July board meeting cycle.
Second.
I guess I'll, I'll speak to that. I've, um, I, I've gotten no community feedback that was, um, supportive of doing this at this time. Um, I'm not, I'm not saying I would never support the position, but I would need, I, I think I would need more specifics as to what is, um, what's really happening here? How long are people stuck waiting for investigations with the, being done by the personnel that, that we have? Uh, it's, it's not, it's not been a, it's not been a mixed bag. I've heard all, um, all people have, have contacted me, have asked me to not, not do this. Uh, I also think this is something where, when you talk about adding a administrative position this close to a new superintendent coming on board, I think it's, um, I think it's prudent to wait. I also would rather wait than just vote no on it today because I think it's a, it's an important discussion to have in the mix as we look for next year. I just don't see it as an immediate emergency. So I would hope that we can, um, postpone till July. Um, I think I'm open-minded to it if we vote in, if we look at it again in July. But if we, if it's gotta be tonight, I'm well below my 85% comfort level with it and I would have to be a no.
Christina?
Thanks, Andrew. Uh, yeah, I would agree with you. I actually, I think, I, I'd like to just learn a little bit more about this. Um, I think your, uh, point of bringing up the new superintendent is a critical one. We, there, you know, we don't know what other sort of reorganization may need to happen. I'm curious to know what, uh, Mr. Murley's, um, position would be on this, how it would fit into sort of the larger organizational structure. Um, I definitely see that there is a need for this position, um, from my conversations with Terry and some of the, the, you know, work we, I've been doing with staff. Um, and I think the points that Melissa Teal-Coller brought up last week or two weeks ago around staff, uh, reporting and sort of needing expeditious, um, and thorough investigations is, is clear. Um, but I agree, I think, learning a little bit more about it, um, and, uh, waiting until July would be prudent.
Laura?
Um, Terry, can you answer a question? I thought that your presentation last week was very thorough and, um, and you, I, but I would like to know from, just from your point of view and after everything that you've shared with us, um, what is the sense of urgency on this? Is there, uh, do you feel like right now there's a backlog or do you feel like there, that the, your, um, department is overwhelmed? Um, and, um, also when are the new, uh, federal laws going to go into effect?
Melissa and Ellen would be best able to answer regarding the title, um. Ellen? I can obviously speak to the HR, um, department. There's been, uh, a considerable amount of time and, um, attention to supporting our staff and being responsive. I've been involved in a number of reviews and appeals this year from staff that expressed concerns around the, uh, process and around the timeline that has been additional need and, you know, I would imagine would vary based on what is currently already underway as well as what has previously occurred. Our department is very busy and we receive a lot of communication that we have a lot of growth opportunities in providing that responsive, um, timely customer service. And we will continue to do the best that we can to continue to be responsive and to implement a really, um, again, responsive, fair, unbiased process to best support all of our staff. And then in addition, we also work collaboratively with Ellen around some that are student and staff, um, related. So for example, I just received a staff concern that is involving a current student at another school that Ellen and I are just beginning to, uh, implement the process. So this really does touch all of our schools. And I do believe that Melissa very articulately stated that, um, there's a number of reasons that are impacting the volume that has been coming in. And I'm really pleased to say that as we build trust and as we build relationships where individuals feel safe and, um, respected and that they will be heard and there will be a response, that that has, um, definitely contributed to the, uh, number of concerns that we've received in addition to the national trend. You know, the hashtag Me Too movement and other things are making it, um, definitely a more visible and, um, helping to empower individuals to find their voice and to express the need. So I expect that we'll continue to see an increase in volume as we, um, continue to improve those systems.
But as you, as you head into the hiring season, um, how will that affect, um, that work? I mean, I, uh, here's my concern is that if we wait till July, that's four months. And then it will take a while to actually hire someone. So you add an, at least another month, uh, once it's been, let's say we vote in favor. Um, now, you know, to get that person up to speed, you're now looking at maybe September. And I wonder, or maybe even later than that, I really don't know. So I, I'm, with that kind of timeline, delaying to July might actually have a, a fairly significant impact. So I'm just wondering, like, when are the, the state, those, I'm sorry, not state, those federal laws, when are those about to, I mean, when will those take effect?
Um, we've been told that they will be taking effect immediately. Unfortunately, when the CLEAR Act was passed for universities, they got four years to get their act together to, to, um, comply. Uh, we've been told that it will be immediate for K-12. So, um, I can tell you that an average Title IX investigation now probably takes, um, a building administration team two to five hours to look into adequately. Um, and it's an ongoing process because our process has to be separate from, um, the police investigation or a- anything of that nature. Um, I do expect, as I said, um, I've been monitoring my lister very closely. I do believe, um, the latest is that it will be implemented or they will be published in, um, April. So that's, that's, I can't, it's a guess, I can't tell you. But here's, here's what's gonna happen when this goes through, if it goes through as, as recommended, is it's, it's gonna be a total game changer in a Title IX investigation. Um, I believe we've shared with you, um, a document that kind of outlined briefly some of the changes. And as I alluded to before, the pendulum is swinging to, um, the alleged perpetrator. So currently now, when an investigation begins, um, a, a principal can just say to a student, I, there's an allegation, come and talk to me. That will be no more. Um, they will have to be given proper notice. Um, and the person that does the investigation will not be able to make, be able to make the decision as to what the consequences or inner measures or protections in place that will be. So from my perspective, from a student perspective, bringing in an investigator will be, um, advantageous for student rights and protecting both sides of that equation. It will take out the, the bias that we all bring to a table. Every one of us brings some sort of bias to the table. And that's one of the things in Title IX that they have talked about, that you have to check at the door. And it's very, very hard to do. And especially as a building administrator, that when you are working closely with these children, that's very hard to check at the door. And I believe that for the student perspective, although it will not be nearly as many, I don't believe, um, as the HR perspective, I do believe that it will be impactful for that. Um, it will be very beneficial to protecting students' rights, um, that they are afforded under the law. Um, and I, I feel that it would be very beneficial to have, as you said, this person kind of on board because the case law, the regulations are just trying to catch up to the case law that's been out there for colleges, basically. So we are gonna be forced to im- implement immediately because the case law already exists. So the suits can come, um, if, if we're not in compliance and they can come immediately.
Ellen, so you said it has to be implemented immediately, but am I wrong in that document that you said that there was maybe a 90-day window of time? Am I remembering that incorrectly?
They, they say that, um, you know, that we'll get some sort of window. But in reality, as I just mentioned, the case law is already there. So there will be an imperative for students to file suit because if it's not implemented correctly, because they already have a leg to stand on. And so we will just be battling that. We'll be being reactive versus being proactive and being on the ball. So it would, it would be advantageous to have somebody ready from my perspective, although the volume wouldn't be what it would be for HR.
Although I can tell you we've
I can tell you we already had at least 50, um, quests that came into me. Um, not all of them have been Title IX, but I have been, that I've been approached with, um, questions from administrators, um, for potential Title Nines. And we still have part of the year to go.
Laura, you asked also about timeline relative to staffing. We are entering staffing season now. We are hoping to take care of all of our internal transferring and hiring and begin to do our external hiring beginning in April. And then that will remain busy all the way through until October. And obviously, we continue to hire all year round, but that would be our, our busiest window of time is April to October.
And if I could just add one, one point, um, outside legal counsel budget is $30,000. When I started, it was, had another zero at the end of it when I started. Terry's being very generous and, and, and very humble in talking about the amounts of investigations and the amount of work that it is taking a toll on her department. We had to hire out for one investigation this year. We weren't able to do it in-house. That one investigation cost the district $13,000. So if you look at the total cost of what this position would cost the district and you look at the money that we could be spending and saving, uh, for our outside legal counsel, the majority of our outside legal counsel budget is really used for special ed cases. Um, we typically in the past have not had to use it for, uh, outside investigators. But that is where we will have to go if the regs are implemented and we don't have someone on point to be able to do those Title IX investigations. And that will be where we have to go if we can't handle those investigations internally. So I just wanted to make sure you understood the, the cost of what an outside investigation looks at. And that wasn't a really complicated, uh, investigation.
Rhonda, you had something on Michelle?
Okay, so I have several questions. What have we done to determine why we have an increase in investigations?
Well, I, I think that would, uh, we've, we've spoken to the, um, the types of cases that are coming forward and, and people who are noting, um, why they've come forward. But that would require an entire psychological evaluation of every single case that we've had to investigate because the allegations are so wide and different. It would require us to have a psychological evaluation of our students because I would say a good portion of the, the allegations that are made against teachers that were required to investigate or other staff members come from students. Um, it, it's often, uh, um, I, I like to say that no one, I take the view that there can be two sides to a story and no one is lying and no one is being untruthful because people have two different perspectives of the exact same event. And so one person's perspective, um, could cause them to make an, to come forward with an allegation. And when you do an investigation, the other person's perspective, based on all the other extenuating circumstances is probably more likely, but that doesn't make that, mean that the person who came forward with the allegation was being untruthful. So I, uh, there's all sorts. It's like asking why are students open and roll out? There's a million different reasons why our students open and roll out.
But I guess what I, and why I'm asking this is because, um, the feedback that I've received and a lot of it has been from staff. Um, I have not received one person, no, no one has said to me anything about the process, um, taking too long. It's all about the morale that they've talked about, that they feel targeted. They think it will be, um, an unsavory situation in general if this is, is happening. Um, they feel it's very reactive, um, and they continue to go back to, and I feel the same way as well. Why are we looking to police this versus figure out what we can do about it?
So I would answer that in two ways. One, I would wonder if any of the individuals who have come forward have been involved in an investigation to know the, um, delicateness and the, um, concern we take to protecting individuals' procedural due rights and their integrity and their, um, reputation as we continue that investigation. I would also ask if any of those individuals have made any complaints to the district that we've investigated and honored their rights and their, um, integrity in making those complaints. Uh, with respect to, um, policing and witch hunts and those sorts of things, we wouldn't have an increase in numbers if that were the case. And this individual, again, we go back to the purpose, is to protect employees and students. It is not to do a witch hunt. We do not go looking for allegations. We absolutely do not go looking for allegations. The allegations that have come forward to the district for both Ellen and Terry's The allegations that have come forward to the district for both Ellen and Teri's, uh, different worlds and then sometimes meld are what people have brought to us and students have brought to us and parents have brought to us and the community has brought to us. And this is to protect all of those individuals. It is not a witch hunt or to police.
Um, the policing comment though relates to, it's, it's not that you're looking for it. They're, they're feeling like this is going to be policing them. They feel that.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't matter if, an investigation has to take place. We can't ignore allegations that come forward. So the individual conducting this investigation is going to be doing the same functions that we're already doing. It's just going to be actually more standardized, more due process, more focused, more expedited, um, more, um, aligned with what the needs of our staff and our students are. It's, it's going to be less, I, I think those, those arguments are really counterintuitive to what this position's purpose is.
But they're real and they're out there and they're staff in our buildings. And I think that's important to note that they are feeling this way about this proposal.
I would just encourage them to come talk to us so that we could have that conversation because I, I think, again, having this conversation here and, and hearing from everyone's perspective as to the purpose and the, the concerns with timelines and making sure we get our staff back in the building as quickly as possible, those are, those are what is motivating this position.
Um, okay. I cannot guarantee that they will come to you and speak to you about that for other reasons, but I can relay that message. I have a question. Are we willing, if, if this is something we absolutely have to have and we're going to create another position? Can you remind me of who this person, who advises this person? Who is their supervisor and who do they report to?
They would be reporting to me and we, I would still be involved in the decision-making, um, regarding, uh, review as well as, um, making sure that that lends around the educational context. Um, you know, what, what that looks like within a classroom, for example. And those types of pieces would be present. Um, Dr. Randy Etten, our HR director, would also continue to be involved as he has been, um, already in a number of investigations and providing, um, also time in, in that area. So the, this, um, particular position would report to me and then would work collaboratively with Ellen and Melissa.
So how can you guarantee that this person is independent, is, you know, going to deliver a fair and unbiased investigation if they're reporting? I, I just wanna know what mechanism, mechanism is in place to, to actually make sure that that's what happens?
So I can speak for my part. Um, my position, um, is also responsible for compliance. So part of the things that I would be looking at, um, and I'm sure Teri would agree, is that we would be reviewing these investigations. They're not the decision-maker, they are just doing the investigation. So the, the decision-maker would be reviewing the investigation to make sure that it is fair, um, impartial bias, that there's not, um, that all the due, due process rights have been met. Um, and that, to make sure that there's no missing pieces. Um, so it, it's not like they are the, the end-all, be-all. Um, they would be just doing the investigative piece and there'd be someone watching compliance and decision-making over that. But
Sorry, no, go ahead.
It's basically taking, um, the legwork that is time, um, intensive um, off of, um, HR's plate, um, and off of building administration's plates at the moment.
So if I'm understanding correctly, it's, there's a workload and you need some support. So we're creating an administrative position to make that happen?
I think that's too simple of an, of an explanation. There is procedural due process requirements coming forward with the new Title IX regulations that will not allow the system for conducting investigations to continue as we are doing that. We need a solution to comply with Title IX. In addition to that, coupled with, as we talked about last week, the new social movements and the staff feeling more comfortable and, um, secure in coming forward with concerns, we have seen an increase in workload. And as a result, the things that a chief human resources officer and a director of human resources need to be doing in a, an employer that has between 3,000 and 4,000 employees are not being addressed because unlike any other organization this large, they are conducting investigations. And they are not able to address the systemic roles that they should be playing with respect to having a thriving workforce.
And where is that data for us? The data, you said, you're, you're, you're talking about data that shows there's an increase in, in investigations, data that talks about, you've mentioned there's a me-too. Um, you mentioned that in some contexts, like are we having a lot more sexual harassment, um, reports, uh, investigations? I, I, I feel like there's a lot of discussion around that there is more happening, but we're not receiving that information.
That was all the data we presented last week at the, at the meeting.
Sexual harassment cases?
I can add as well that, um, in the, um, memo that you received tonight, that's part of the discipline, um, MLSS behavior, um, there is data around the Title IX in there, um, as well. So that has the last three years of data, um, for cases for Title IX.
So we have staff, staffing investigations, we have that in our information numbers?
We presented that last week at our, our presentation. Did, I don't we, well, we orally provided it. Did you, did you request it in writing after?
I asked, well, I did ask for it, but last weekend I
I did ask for it, I think, last week, but I never followed up with you on that. But yeah, I think Okay.
I can repeat
Thank you, sorry.
Michelle?
So as we think The complexities of this position, I think that's really what we're talking about here. Um, increased numbers of, of, um, investigations required, um, is moving us forward. But more importantly, we talked about the need for a, a person who has a skill set that's different than a human resource specialist. We talked about that because we could have, you know, uh, done a human resource specialist. The concern is the complexities of the law. And if the compliance of the law does not meet the due process rights and the rights and the protections that, that individuals have under Title VII or Title IX, what can happen is that we not only would be out of compliance, but when we run the risk of having the Department of Justice and the Office of Civil Rights. And, and that to me is very serious if you are not able to comply. And I've been down that road and seen how that works, and it's not a good place to be. Most important, we have a responsibility of more than 3,000 employees as well as more than 21,000 students and families to protect them. And this is what's, it's intended to do.
So here are the numbers. As of last Monday, uh, we had 85 allegations of employee misconduct. As of today, we had said last Monday, 22 allegations of harassment, discrimination, or bullying. That's now 23, um, from one week ago. Uh, this year alone, investigations have resulted in 231 days of employees being on paid administrative leave. Um, last year, for the entire year, there were 343 total days with respect to Title IX. Um, in the previous two years, the district reviewed 58 and 59 reports. As of last Monday, we were at 45 already. Um, with respect to volunteer background checks, we had 1,869 so far and 632 employee background checks. Because as you remember, a component of this position would be reviewing those background checks.
Can you follow up after this, Melissa, in email, those, those data points to us?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ellen, is there a chance that this won't go, go through in April?
There is that chance, but for it to not go through, they need a joint resolution by both houses. I don't see that happening with this current administration. I, I can't, I cannot give a guarantee. I wish I could, I wish I could give you a date when it's gonna be implemented. But everything on my listserv seems to indicate that it is going through, um, as proposed. Um, and what's, it's just being delayed. Um, everybody's speculating on the delay. Um, you know, anything can happen, but, um, I don't see a joint resolution by both houses coming. And it's just my opinion.
Rhonda?
Um, so where are we finding the money for this? And, I mean, are we, are we flattening another area? Are we, I'm just curious where we're finding the money and if we're, if we are interested, if we have the appetite to actually, um, flatten something else before creating a new position salary?
I, I am not proposing to cut anyone else's department. I have, um, there's three total people in my department. And, uh, I think everyone recognizes that I can't cut someone for this position because of the current workload. Um, I'm not proposing to cut anyone in Teri's department. She's already understaffed. And that's, that's how we got to this position is because she's already understaffed.
But you, I'm sure you understand, um, so we have some similarities. We talk about workload, we talk about worker caseload, we talk about manpower, we talk about adding. We can't cut in order to support another area. This happens every day in schools.
I, I think I can ask Dr. Langenfeld, the, and Pete maybe, the amount of staff that we have added in schools, the amount of teachers, the amount of support staff. I don't know if Claudia's still here to speak to the amount that we've added for special ed, but you are correct, Rhonda. We have added, um, a number of staff across the district to support the needs of our students. And we are coming forward asking for an add to support the needs of students and staff.
Michelle?
I think what, um, as we look forward, there are a couple of areas we actually trimmed back last year to see if we could, uh, do some cost savings, and we did. Um, we did in human resources, as a matter of fact. Um, we had a chief there and now we have an executive director. I want to remind us, we already tried to cut some back. Um, and I think that's a really important, um, piece of this. We cut back in, in business, we cut back in, um, uh, technology as well. And, uh, there's, we did some cost savings there, but now we're finding that there are places and spaces to reallocate some of that. Um, again, we don't have a chief technology information officer anymore. We have an executive director, we trimmed that back. We don't have a chief, um, human resource officer anymore, we have an executive director. So we did some flattening and we did some cost savings. My concern really goes back again to the cost if we don't do something like this. The cost to our employees, the cost to our staff. And equally as important, the overall liability the district would be looking at. Um, the other piece that I look at this, it's a, it's a huge, complex, um, legal piece, but it's also what's happening in human resources. You know, we hear about recruitment retention. We're out there trying, um, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, supporting staff, um, as much as we can. We're responsive, we're there and ready to go, and we want to be, and for our students as well. But the piece around it that's really important is as, as the complexities of cases move forward, and that's the other piece of this that we're not discussing. But when, I've never seen the complexity that we're seeing right now. And some of it's made to the media and some of it hasn't. But we start to look at that and say, okay, how can we be very responsive and serve our children and families well and serve our staff well? And that's the other piece within the, within their needs. Um, and I, I just don't know, um, that if we, if we don't move in this direction, where, where we're looking in the future and how that will support our, our families and our students and staff as well as we can be. That's what this is intended to do. It's not intended to do, um, anything less. And we do have some cost savings that we did save in those other departments in the past.
Christina?
Thanks, Michelle. Yeah, so I actually am going to say that, um, I'm going to change my mind. Um, I really was thinking that we should wait. But, um, I think that the conversation at the board table tonight really is sort of highlighted for me, um, the importance of this. Again, I've seen firsthand the way that this has impacted our staff. Um, and I, I, it, it is so important that as a district, we have fair and expeditious systems in place. Um, when I heard from this, again, this young woman who just talked about the complexities and how long it took, and, um, she was visibly frustrated. And I know that her narrative isn't, um, an outlier. Um, and I think with these new laws coming down, you know, and, and requirements coming down, we need to set ourselves up for success. Um, I am worried to what Rhonda talked about with the feeling of our staff that it is a policing mechanism. Um, so that's a consideration definitely moving forward that we get out that, that language, right? That feeling that it is not, we're not coming after you, this is meant to support you and to protect you. Um, so I just wanted to share because I was kind of leaning in one direction, but I'm, I'm sort of on the other side now and just, I like to tell people where I am, so.
Pardon me? Yes, you can. Hang on.
Eric?
He's coming back.
Did you, oh, I thought you hung up, you hung up on him.
No, he's here. Oh, he's coming back.
She hung up on him.
I may have hung up on him.
You did hang up on him, I saw you press the button.
Oh, right. Good to know you're here.
Been here since five. He's probably calling you. All right, well, the votes on the, the motions on the table
The motions on the table, what, we should wait for?
He's coming.
Eric.
Hello, I will let you speak next, sorry.
Just speaking, hang up on me.
I know.
You're up, you're on.
Um, yeah, I, I've gotta agree. Um, I think the, the work has been demonstrated. I, I, I think about the customer service. You know, we hear all the time that we need to do better with customer service. Um, and, and that's really what our HR department is meant to do for our internal staff. And while, uh, people who are going through investigations may complain, may not experience, um, a delay, there are other staff in our district who do. And I'll remind you that one of our staff members was, was diagnosed with cancer. And while they were waiting to hear back on what their benefit options were, that process took two weeks because someone was in the process of an investigation. You can talk about, uh, the staff that we have and maybe they should have done better, and yes, that's true. But also, our staff who have other jobs to do are setting down everything else to go and do these investigations because those are also important. But that is not good customer service to our staff. And, um, you know, I, I, I get the, you know, waiting for a superintendent, but the reality is that that department is understaffed and it's negatively impacting our employees, whether they're going through investigations or not. And, um, so I'm, I'm really, really adamant that, uh, we vote on this tonight.
All right, so there's a motion on the table to delay the vote. We'll do that, um, motion, well
You have to vote, you have to vote on the amendment.
Yeah, well, it's not really an, well
A, a vote to postpone?
Yeah. Um, so we'll, we'll take that vote first.
So this is the vote to postpone?
Till July.
Till July, okay.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
No.
Shelton?
No.
Vanenhove?
No.
Warren?
No.
Maloney?
No.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
So it's defeated five to two. And now we have a, the motion on the table, um, the original motion to modify the table of organization and, uh, approve the job description.
I'm doing the original, am I reading it again?
No, because you put it, we put that on the table already. All right, Sandy, yeah?
Becker?
No.
Sitnikow?
No.
Maloney?
Aye.
Vanenhove?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye. Carried five-two.
Carried five-two. Thank you very much for all your information.
Okay, I move that the twenty-twenty-one health insurance rates for the five-hundred-dollar, five-hundred-dollar deductible plan, fifteen-hundred high deductible health plan with a health reimbursement account and the minimum essential plan for active employees as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye. Carried six-zero.
I move that the twenty-twenty-one health insurance rates for the five-hundred-dollar deductible plan and five-hundred-dollar per-person deductible plan, fifteen-hundred high deductible health plan with a health reimbursement account, the minimum essential plan, and the prescription plan for retirees as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Carried six-zero.
I move that the twenty-twenty-one dental insurance rates for active employees as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Vanden Hoegel? Oh, I'm sorry. He's not here. He's gone.
Said everybody, Sandy. Carried six-zero.
I move that the twenty-twenty-one dental insurance rates for retirees as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Shelton?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Sitnikow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six-zero.
I move that the consent items as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Sitnikow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six-zero. I'd entertain a motion for adjournment. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. We missed, uh, future agenda items. Are there any future agenda items that board members want to bring up? Okay, um, then I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine-two-zero-four-four-eight-two-zero-two-five or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.